Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the remote meeting of the County Council being held on Wednesday, the 24th of February 2021 at 10am. This meeting is being streamed live to the council's website and will be available to view for a minimum of six months. Please be aware that any footage from the meeting may be used in subsequent media broadcasts. I am councillor Katie Corrigan, Chair of the Council. I would like to extend a warm welcome to members, officers, members of the public and the media who are watching this livestream. Before I commence with the formal business on the agenda, I will quickly recap the housekeeping issues for us all to follow. For those participating in the meeting, if you could please only speak when invited to speak by myself as chair, keep your microphone on mute at all times unless invited to speak. I must emphasise how important this is so that we don't get any feedback from other microphones. If you wish to speak, please type RTS in the chat function. This will indicate to me that you wish to speak. Please bear in mind that all participants can see the messages in the chat function. Once invited to speak, please introduce yourself with your name and position unless you have already introduced yourself earlier in the meeting. If you are having issues with connectivity, try switching off your video and use the audio function. If connectivity issues continue, you may have to leave the meeting and rejoin to get a best signal. Please follow these simple rules as it will help us to run the meeting as efficiently as possible. Thank you. That moves us on to item one, the minutes. Can I have a mover and a seconder to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on January, 20th of January 2021?
Chair, can I move the minutes, please? Councillor Hennig, thank you.
Can I have a seconder?
A second to minutes, Chairman, councillor Nevia.
Thank you. Does the council agree the minutes as a correct record?
Agreed.
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 Agreed. Thank you. If there is any dissent to the minutes, please indicate you wish to speak in the chat function. I'll briefly pause for any requests. No indications have been received. Apologies. Councillor Shuttles?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. Just in relation to the minutes, in relation to the parental leave for members, I did object to that and I would like that mentioned in the minutes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other indications have been received. Thank you. I can confirm that the minutes are agreed as a correct record. Item two, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in relation to any items of business on the agenda?
Yes, Chair. Councillor Liz Brown, Neville's Cross, just to declare I'm a governor of Elmore Hall School, which comes up in item seven.
Thank you, councillor. Any more requests? There is no more declarations. That moves us on to item three, Chair's announcements. Colleagues, in the view that the main focus of this morning's meeting is to set the budget and council tax, and given the time it takes to conduct remote full council meetings, I am seeking agreement from the council to waive standing orders to allow for the extension of the meeting should go beyond two and a half hours. Do I have a seconder, please?
Yes, Chair. I'm Uzu Johnson, Vice Chair of Durham County Council, and I second the proposal.
Thank you. Can I ask the council to agree this course of action?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. That moves on to item four, leaders' report. Can I invite councillor Hennig, leader for council, to present his report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, following the heavy snow and freezing temperatures experienced earlier this month, it's good to see the first signs of spring appearing in County Durham. The green shoots of recovery can also be seen in the battle against coronavirus, with our infection rates continuing to fall and the government's roadmap out of lockdown giving an indication of how restrictions could be eased in the weeks ahead. On behalf of everyone at Durham County Council, I would like to thank our communities for everything they are doing to help stop the spread of the virus. It's vital we keep up these efforts to help save lives, protect the NHS and allow us to return to a more normal way of life. One of the first changes announced by the government is the return of all children to school. It is worth highlighting that our schools have remained open during the lockdown to educate the children of key workers and those with additional needs. School staff have also been working very hard to assist pupils and parents with home learning. I would like to thank them all for their amazing efforts and reassure them that we will do everything we can to support them in the months ahead. News that more than 15 million of the UK's most vulnerable people have received their first dose of the coronavirus vaccine is hugely welcome. In County Durham, 95% of people over 70 have received their first dose, along with 82% of our extremely clinically vulnerable residents. This week, we saw the North East's third large vaccination centre open its doors at the Arnison Centre near Durham. This will allow our NHS colleagues to vaccinate up to 1,000 people each day and complements the impressive work already underway at GP surgeries and smaller vaccination centres across the county. The vaccination programme is a real team effort, with the NHS working alongside local authorities, the armed forces, emergency services and community volunteers. During the heavy snow, our Clean and Green team assisted GP surgeries by helping to clear paths and car parks to allow appointments to continue. It's also been a busy period for our highways team and gritting crews who has ever worked so hard to keep the county's roads safe during the winter weather. As well as supporting our residents and businesses through the immediate challenges of the pandemic, the only way to ensure the long-term resilience and recovery of our communities is to forge ahead with our ambitious regeneration plans. By investing in County Durham and attracting additional investment from our partners, we will help create and safeguard thousands of jobs. This month, Cabinet approved plans to invest a further £5 million into our Towns and Villages investment plan. The plan already commits £20 million to the county's most disadvantaged communities and the additional £5 million will be divided between our 14 area action partnerships for projects identified by local residents following the successful consultation events which we held over the autumn. Towns and villages are a key part of our regeneration strategy and we aim to ensure the money we spend delivers the best possible outcomes for communities, from improving the quality of housing to revitalising high streets. The long-awaited revamp of festival walk in Spennymoor is just one example of a project that has benefited from Towns and Villages funding. And this month, we welcomed the start of demolition of the derelict Quick Save store at the site, which will be replaced by a new town centre car park. Also part of our Towns and Villages programme is our £70 million five-year plan to build 500 new homes for rent in County Durham, at a time when there is a real need for more affordable housing. The first phase was approved by Cabinet this month and sets out plans for 155 new homes on council-owned land in seven locations across the county. Work has also now begun on a much-needed state-of-the-art bus station in the heart of Durham city, and there is also cause for optimism in Bishop Auckland. After our successful bid to the government's Future High Street Fund last year, we have now submitted a bid to the Stronger Towns Programme. Bishop Auckland was selected by the government for this scheme, and if our bid is successful, the funding will be allocated to regeneration projects in the town. We also remain committed to tackling climate change and have strengthened this commitment with a statement of ambitions outlining how we will continue to work towards positive environmental change. Last year, our Business Energy Efficiency Project, or BEEP, was able to support nearly 100 businesses to make changes in their operations to reduce carbon emissions. We've also been busy planting thousands of new trees across green spaces in County Durham as part of the Forestry Commission's Urban Tree Challenge Fund. And this month, we successfully hosted this year's County Durham Environment Awards online to celebrate environmental guardianship and community spirit during the pandemic. I would like to congratulate all of the winners and nominees for the fantastic work that they're doing. Chair, COVID-19 will be with us for a long time to come, but in County Durham, we remain very well placed to recover quickly and sustainably. This will require the continued efforts of all of our communities, and I again thank everyone for what they have done so far. I would ask residents to please continue to following the rules, maintain the hands-to-face space guidance, and we will come through this pandemic together. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. If any members wish to speak on the report, can you please indicate in the chat function? Councillor Bell?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Just a quick one for Simon in relation to the school staff. I have asked Durham Public Health about this, but haven't gotten a reply. Is it possible the authority can assist in fast-tracking the offer for the vaccination to school staff? Is that within our capacity as an authority to do that?
Councillor Hennig, do you want to respond?
Well, we can certainly take that up through our public health officers and our Director of Public Health, Amanda Healy. As you know, councillor Bell, the groups have been determined nationally in terms of who that's been sent to, but there's no reason why we can't lobby and add to that. So I will certainly happy to take that up through our Director of Public Health. But I think probably, as we know, I think those decisions are being made nationally in terms of the groups that have been invited for a vaccination. I think Amanda's just posted that she'll get a full response to your query, so we will get back to you with more on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more requests from councillors? No more requests? Can I ask the council to note the report?
Agreed.
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 Agreed. Agreed.
Thank you. That moves on to item five, questions from the public. There are no questions for today's meeting. Item six, petitions. There are no petitions for consideration. That moves on to item seven, reports from the Cabinet. Can I invite councillor Hennig, leader for council, to present his report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The report before members this morning includes details of issues considered by the Cabinet at meetings held on the 13th of January and the 10th of February 2021. A number of important reports included grant support for business recovery, Bishop Auckland Town Fund submission approval, Towns and Villages investment plan and Council Homes Build Programme. Chair, I'm pleased to table the report.
Thank you. No questions have been submitted. Can I ask the council to note the report?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. Loaded.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Councillor Shield?
Thank you, Chair. Just to pick up on the point about the Towns and Villages regeneration programme.
So, Councillor, no questions have been submitted? The deadline passed last Friday? Or you can't ask a question?
I understood that I could raise this point under Cabinet Questions, which I had already done, and this report has come in front of full council, and I thought I had the right to actually raise a particular issue regarding the Towns and Villages, which is quite relevant.
Thanks, councillor. I'll just check with legal first. Thanks, councillor. I'll just check with legal first. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Councillor Shield is correct. He did submit a question for the Cabinet meeting last week, which was dealt with at the Cabinet meeting itself. In order to raise a question on the Cabinet Report table today, the deadline for questions was noon on Friday, the 19th of February, so he's too late to submit a question at this stage in relation to that report. To item eight, Budget 2021 to 2022, report under section 25 of the Local Government Act 2003. Can I invite the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report?
Morning. Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. This report fulfils our statutory responsibilities under section 25 of the Local Government Act 2003, which states that when an authority is considering its budget and setting its council tax for the coming year, its chief finance officer is required to give his professional opinion on firstly, the robustness of the estimates made in the preparation of the budget and for the purpose of calculation what is known as the council tax requirement, and secondly, the adequacy of the reserves allowed for in the budget proposals. Chair, as the Chief Finance Officer for this council, the arrangements I have put in place to discharge these responsibilities and my professional opinion on these matters is something which I take very seriously. This is one of the most important reports I will present to council and gives you the assurance you need in terms of relying on the figures and the underlying assumptions that have formed the basis of the budget proposals you will consider later on the agenda. In terms of the robustness of the estimates, I've set out in sections nine to 15 of the report the process that has been followed in preparing the budgets and the reports to be considered later today. The budget proposals presented today are the end of a long and in-depth process, and I'm happy to give my opinion that based on the work undertaken, the estimates can be considered to be robust and can be relied upon when you're taking your decisions. In terms of the adequacy of reserves, I've set out at sections 16 to 28 of the report details of the best practice guidance published by SITFA in terms of the level, the purpose and the reasons for holding various reserves. I've outlined that by utilising reserves to balance recurrent expenditure, this is not a sustainable long-term solution, but that the budget proposals considered later do factor in a modest use of the reserves to balance the budget next year, but that that is reversed the following year as part of our medium-term financial planning. I would highlight the significant uncertainty in terms of our funding going forward as we await the outcome of the delayed comprehensive spending review and the fair funding review, which are expected to be published at the back end of this calendar year. The recommended policy on reserves taken all these factors into account is set out at section 26 of the report, and I can confirm that I am wholly satisfied that the earmarked reserves that have been set aside are being set aside for specific legitimate reasons. In conclusion, Chair, in my professional opinion, if the council were to accept the Cabinet's budget proposals, including these proposals in terms of council tax increases, then I am satisfied that the risks identified in the budget-setting process alongside our track record of managing the council's finances means that we have adequate reserves as we move forward across this medium-term financial planning period. With that, Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions members may have on the report. The recommendations are set out in section four. Thank you.
Thank you. If any members wish to speak on the report, can you please indicate in the chat function? I'll briefly pause for a moment to allow any requests. No requests have been received. Therefore, can I ask the council to have regard to this statement when considering and approving the budget and the level of council tax for 2021, 2022? If there is any dissent, please indicate through the meeting chat.
Agree.
Agreed.
Agree.
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 Thank you, members. Can I remind the council that under paragraph 14.6 of the council's procedure rules, that recorded votes must take place for each of the budget and council tax items, including amendments? All the votes taken at this meeting will be carried out using Microsoft Teams. Councillor Robinson?
Yes, good morning, Chairman, and thank you. I'm councillor John Robinson, and I represent the Sedgefield Division. Chair, I wish to move a motion, as I have done for the last four years, that agenda items nine and 10 in relation to the budget and the council tax setting are inextricably linked, and therefore, in accordance with council procedure 11c, may I move a motion without notice that both items nine and 10 are considered together? Thank you for that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do you have a second, Chair? Councillor Lang?
Mr Chairman, thank you. Councillor Audrey Lang, I second the motion, Chairman.
Thank you. Can I ask the head of Legal and Democrat Services to explain the impact on procedures of taking the two items together?
Thank you, Chair. As councillor Robinson has already stated, this is a practice we've adopted over the last few years, and it is appropriate to take these two items together as an amendment on one could impact on the other. At the point at which we come to a vote, we will need to vote on recommendations separately, assuming that the motion is agreed by council. Considering the two items together also impact upon the length of time that members are able to speak on the items, group leaders will have 10 minutes, movers of motions or amendments, if not the group leaders, will also have 10 minutes, seconders will have six minutes, and all of the speakers will have three minutes.
Thank you. Does the council agree?
Agree.
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 If there's any dissent, please indicate using the chat function. I can confirm that the council have agreed this course of action. That moves on to items nine and 10, Medium-Term Financial Plan, 2021 to 22 to 2024 to 25, Revenue and Capital Budget, 2021 to 22, and Council Tax Setting in order to meet the County Council's council tax requirement for 2021 to 2022. Can I ask the leader of the council to move the reports, please?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I'm very pleased to move the Cabinet's budget proposals for 2021/22 and an outline Medium-Term Financial Plan for the period 21/22 to 2024/25. The budget has been prepared against a backdrop of significant uncertainty which exists beyond next financial year, as we await the publication of the government's Comprehensive Spending Review and the implementation of the Fair Funding Review, which have again been delayed. We don't know if there could be a return to austerity and further cuts to come, given the scale of current public sector borrowing and the impact of the pandemic. There also remains hanging over us the threat of a large potential cut to our public health budget, a new national formula which would hit County Durham harder than any other part of the country. The report takes into account the local government finance settlement for 2021/22, which we received in late December following the spending round announcements by the Chancellor in November of last year. We've received some additional funding, which is always welcome, but not enough to address our needs or to rebalance the cumulative impact of a decade of austerity. The report provides a comprehensive and detailed overview of the local government finance settlement's impact on the council, including an analysis of core spending power announcements, where additional flexibility on council tax increases has been afforded to local governments, and where the government's much-quoted increase in core spending power anticipates an increase in council tax of just under 5% next year. A detailed assessment of these announcements is set out in sections 52 to 82 of the report. I also want to highlight, as last year, that County Durham's core spending power per dwelling on the government's own figures is now below the national average for England, as shown in Table four in section 73 of the report. I wonder if anyone can justify core spending power per dwelling being as much as £300 higher in Surrey than in County Durham, as made clear in the table, a legacy of a decade of Conservative government. As section 76 of the report states, if Durham were funded at the national average, we would have £45 million of additional resources next year. Chair, I always approach these matters in a fair-minded way, and the report does identify that there will be some one-off funding provided to local government next year, including an additional £15.6 million to offset the continuing additional COVID-19 costs the council will incur next year, and that the Sales, Fees and Charges Income Guarantee Scheme has been extended for three months into 21/22. The government has also honoured its commitment to increasing funding through the dedicated Schools Grant for High Needs Send, where we have faced and continue to face significant pressures. However, the report also sets out the financial pressures we continue to face. These are set out in detail in Table five within section 102 of the report, and total nearly £27 million. Key elements on this list include inflation, adult demographic pressures and pressures within children's services, which impact on councils across the North East. Despite these pressures, and as a consequence of our strong management of the council's finances over many years, I'm very pleased that there is significant investment in frontline services built into the budget next year, and these are detailed from section 107 and in Table six of the report. They include a continuation of the £10 million worth of investments that were built into the budget for 2021, including additional investment in highways, clean and safe neighbourhoods and support for our work tackling climate change. There is also an additional £5 million in the Towns and Villages Initiative and continued investment in providing vital support to low-income households, which builds on the support we provide through our Local Council Tax Reduction Scheme, where unlike the majority of other councils, we don't cap the support available to working-age claimants in County Durham. Full details of these investments are set out in the report. The budget also includes £88 million of new additional capital schemes, taking the capital programme to almost £500 million over the next four years. New schemes include leisure centre investments, a new school build for Spennymore, and a rebuild of Belmont Community School and Belmont C of E Primary. There is additional funding for highways maintenance and support for our new council house building programme. The capital programme, including details of the new additions to the programme and the capital financing requirements, are set out in sections 157 to 177 and Table 15, with the updated capital strategy and details of individual schemes set out in Appendix seven, eight and nine. Chair, when placed together with the investment in key economic sites designed to bring more than 30,000 new jobs to County Durham, I believe this represents the most ambitious plan for County Durham seen in a generation. And this, Chair, despite the fact that by the 31st of March this year, savings totaling more than £240 million will have been delivered since 2010. There are new savings proposals totaling £2.2 million next year, which, when added to the previously agreed savings of £3.1 million, will mean that savings targets will total approximately £5.3 million next year. There are a further £2.4 million of savings plans in place for 2022/23, which are also included in the report. Details of the savings included in the budget next year are set out in sections 179 to 208, with details of individual proposals across the next two years included in Appendix three. Workforce considerations are set out at sections 234 to 237 and show that by the end of 21/22, there will have been a reduction in the council's establishment of 3,000 posts since 2010, 700 of which have been through the removal of vacant posts. The updated MTFP model, which brings all of this together, is set out at Appendix six, and the underpinning assumptions are set out at section 142 to 146 of the report. There is a balanced position for next year with the use of the budget support reserve of £3.778 million required to balance the budget, plus a use of £5 million of earmarked reserves to fund the additional investment in towns and villages that has been built into the budget next year. Over the last 10 years, it is worth noting, we've utilised £100 million of reserves. The budget has been subject to consultation via AAPs and through meetings arranged with trade unions and with business ratepayers. Corporate overview and scrutiny met on the 11th of February, and their feedback on the budget proposals is set out at sections 88 to 89. The recommendations for item nine are summarised at section 49, and I can confirm that they satisfy our statutory requirements with regard to the budget setting, including the declaration of the forecast deficit on the collection funds, the adoption of the pay policy and the various treasury management policies and strategies, which includes our updated property investment strategy and the updated prudential indicators. Item 10 details the various statutory council tax setting determinations we're required to formally consider and adopt, and sets out a total council tax increase for the council of 2.99% in 2021/22, which includes a 1% proposed adult social care precept, a proposed increase which will almost certainly be below the national average. The report includes precept information for the County Durham and Arlington Fire and Rescue Authority, the Durham Police, Crime and Victims Commissioner and County Durham's Parish and Town Councils, which can be found in Appendix three. Chair, I move the recommendations of both reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a second to the reports?
Thank you, Chairman. Morning, everyone. I'm Alan Eadie, Deputy Leader of the Council. I also have the finance portfolio within the Cabinet. Chairman, can I, first of all, commend the officers for their sterling work in developing these budget proposals table in front of members this morning, and for their professional endeavours in how they have strategically managed the finances of this council since we became a unitary authority? Once again, we have before us a very comprehensive and thorough report, which clearly sets out the significant uncertainty that exists beyond next financial year as a result of the further delay to the Comprehensive Spend Review and the so-called Fair Funding Review. After a decade of austerity, which has placed immense pressure on local services, we are being placed in a situation of responding to the unprecedented challenges of supporting our residents and communities and our businesses through this pandemic. Chairman, we have received one-off coronavirus funding of £15.6 million to cover the costs the council will be required to continue to incur in 2021/22. But COVID costs are difficult to accurately determine at this stage. What we do know is that we will face additional costs and loss of income, from amongst other things, the pressures on the sustainability support for adult social care, waste disposal and refuse collection, lost income from leisure, car parking theatres, planning fees and building control. All of these need to be taken into consideration when setting the budget. Decisions we have taken in previous years to protect frontline service delivery and the strong financial management of this council over many years has meant that we have been able to rise to these challenges, despite the unfair and disproportionate cuts in funding that we have faced over many years now. It is staggering to think that by the end of this MTFP planning period, we forecast cuts, and let's call them what they are, Chairman, will be closer to £290 million, and that by the end of next year, we would have lost around 3,000 posts from this council based on current savings plans. In 2010, I stated that we were facing at least a decade of austerity, and many members across the floor accused me of over-exaggerating. What is more worrying to me, though, is how the Chancellor seeks to redress the public finances going forward. At the height of the banking crisis, public borrowing peaked at £170 billion, and the current year, public sector borrowing will be more than twice that and closer to £400 billion. I fear that the government will soon show its true colours and seek further and deeper cuts in funding to local government, and despite the rhetoric about levelling up, the greater burden of those cuts will fall on authorities like ourselves. And the leader has already outlined, how can it be right that the government's own figures show that core spending power per dwelling for Durham County Council is below the national average? If we were at the national average, we would have £45 million more funding each year than what we currently have. Durham is the 48th most deprived local authority area in the country out of 151 upper-tier authorities, yet the likes of Surrey, an affluent area, receives more funding than us. How can that be right or fair? Due to the deprivation challenges we face, we should be funded above the national average. Against that backdrop, Chairman, we have nevertheless managed the council's finances prudently and effectively. This budget and our overall position in terms of the council's finances is testament to all the offices implied by this council, but also to the members of this council, Cabinet, scrutiny and of all political persuasions. It is a budget that includes prudent council tax increases resisting the Chancellor's call for us to increase council tax by five per cent next year. The leader has already mentioned these additional investments, but I'm going to mention them again. Twenty two million of additional investment in frontline services next year, services that will make a real difference to people's lives, from investment in climate change initiatives and neighbourhood wardens and winter maintenance and highways maintenance, amongst other things, to the extension of our council tax support top up scheme. The budget includes an ambitious capital programme with eighty eight million of new investments added, including further significant investment in our leisure centres, in schools, including new builds and in our highways infrastructure, bringing the total capital programme to four hundred and eighty four million over the next four years. If only the government would provide the funding needed to address maintenance backlogs in our schools and on our highways, we could do much more. I am particularly pleased that we are able to provide four hundred thousand H A P next year to allow them to oversee local initiatives to tackle poverty and the local response to the pandemic while also providing scope to invest in local initiatives in support of the Towns and Villages Programme. Chairman, the budget is predicated on a two point nine nine per cent council tax increase next year, below the amount many authorities will have to increase their council tax by and below the level recommended by this government. It includes a prudent use of reserves to balance the budget next year and to fund the additional investment in towns and villages and builds on the utilisation of around a hundred million of reserves that we've used over the last ten years to balance the budget and fund redundancies and early retirements. Chairman, I commend the proposals set out in the report and second the recommendations, but in doing so and in light of the significant uncertainty that exists beyond next financial year, note that there are undoubtedly significant financial challenges to come. I second that.
Thank you. councillor Crute, I understand you wish to speak as Chair of Overview and Scrutiny.
That's right, Chair. Thank you. I'm councillor Rod Crute, representing the Blackhall Wardens. As you state, I'm also chairman of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board and I'd like to take a minute or two to offer some comments on the M T F P from a scrutiny perspective. Our scrutiny of the budget took place over two meetings, the first one back in October and the second one earlier this month. And although our ability to scrutinise this year has again been hampered by the late publication of the financial settlement, our considerations have been broad based and informed by the overall financial outlook for local government. We've reviewed the budget setting process, the local government financial settlement and its impact on the council, the medium term financial plan, savings and investment proposals. Overall, the management board was very concerned about the high degree of uncertainty that exists beyond the next year in the context of the large national deficit and the potential for further austerity for local government as a result. There remains ongoing concern that the council may lose significant public health funding as a consequence of the fair funding review and the potential impact this could have on our ability to fund services. By way of example, Chair, if the government chooses to follow the accurate guidance on resource allocation, this council alone could lose a million pounds in in public health funding. Now, to my mind, that's unconscionable for a county suffering such high persistent levels of health inequality. So given this context, members' support of the approach taken by Cabinet in terms of medium term financial planning assumptions, which assume prudent reductions in our funding, especially as the impact of Brexit is yet to be fully seen. The need for a fairer and longer term funding settlement from government received in good time was highlighted as essential and the need to lobby government further on the council's funding position was something the committee wished to see. The committee also highlighted the importance of maintaining a healthy financial position through strong budget management and maintaining prudent levels of reserves. Turning to specific savings and investment proposals, members made a range of specific comments which are set out in full of paragraphs eighty eight to eighty nine of the budget.
The remaining councillor.
And these include concerns about the budget pressures affecting adults and children's social care and whether funding from government covered these areas adequately. The investment plans proposed by Cabinet were well put, including those in relation to libraries, welfare assistance and the Towns and Villages Investment Plan. The committee would like to thank Cabinet, all members and officers for their hard work, dedication and commitment in producing this report. Those particular thanks to councillor Alan Neary for sound management of finances over the years. Chairman, thanks for the opportunity to share the views of scrutiny with full council this morning.
Thank you. Before moving to the on to the debate of Items Nine and Ten, can I invite any questions on the reports? I'll briefly pause for any requests. There's no request. Can I ask the head of Legal and Democrat Services to explain the procedure regarding the amendments?
Thank you, Chair. The amendments will be dealt with in the order with which they were received and included in the papers for today's meeting. So we'll have the amendment from the Durham County Council Independent Group and Durham Independent Group first, followed by the Conservative Group Amendment and then three amendments from the Liberal Democrat Group. The deadline for submitting amendments to the proposed budget and policy framework was noon on Friday, the nineteenth of February, so no further amendments can be moved at this time and no amendments other than those set out in the agenda were received. Once an amendment has been moved and seconded, the debate is on that amendment. Each member can speak once on the amendment, except councillor Henig, who as mover of the substantive motions, will have the right of reply before the amendment is put to a vote. He cannot otherwise speak on the amendments. If, following the vote, the amendment is carried, it will become part of the substantive motion. If the amendment is not carried, the debate returns to the substantive motion, but we will repeat the process for each of the remaining amendments. Now set out earlier in the agenda, the votes on the amendments will also be recorded. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the head of Legal and Democrat Services on the procedure? I'll pause to allow any requests for questions. No requests have been received. We will now consider the amendments which are detailed in your papers. Can I invite councillor John Shuttleworth to move the joint Durham County Council Independent Group and Durham Independent Group Amendment, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I know I've got a long agenda, so I'm not going to go on, but I hope that as in past years, the Labour Group do understand where we're coming from with the amendment and possibly get the message as they have done in the past and I refer to that as the extra five million pound that was put into the highway maintenance budget, you know, some two years ago, which I banged on about. You know, the highway and footway network is one of the most important assets that the council owns and as everyone uses them and therefore everybody benefits from them. The current backlog in repairs is around a hundred and seventy five million pound and I know Rome wasn't built in a day, but these works need speeding up. And I welcome what's in the budget today for highways. However, if this amendment goes through, it would actually allow for a further eight point seven million of investment across the county, which would in fact lessen the insurance claims we had each year. So I'd like to propose the following budget amendment, that the council in respect of the Cabinet's twenty twenty one two budget and Medium Term Financial Plan eleven considers the amendment stated, which I probably on your screen now, and Durham County News is to cease publication of this entirely with a saving of a hundred and ninety six thousand pounds in relation to communications and marketing, staffing reductions, reduce the staffing and communications and marketing team to one press officer and two assistants from the first of October this year, allowing sufficient time for the appropriate restructuring to take place. This would produce a saving of eight hundred and eighteen thousand pound in twenty one twenty two and a further eight hundred and eighteen thousand twenty two twenty three and the total revenue savings would in fact be one billion and fourteen thousand pound with an additional eight hundred and eighteen thousand in the next financial year. The revenue savings identified above should be invested as follows. A Member's neighbourhood of budget, this has been reduced over a number of years and we propose that increase the neighbourhood budget revenue element by four thousand six hundred pound per member to ten thousand and additional cost of five hundred and seventy nine thousand five hundred pound in twenty one twenty two. And also the highway capital programme to utilise the remaining twenty twenty one twenty two revenue saving of four hundred and thirty four thousand six hundred to finance prudential borrowing of eight point seven million to augment the highway capital programme to address the condition backlog. The twenty twenty two twenty three revenue saving of eight hundred and eighteen thousand pound can then then be used to utilise the savings shortfall in that year and protect frontline services. With that, I'll move that amendment. Thank you.
I'll second it to the other members.
Yes, Chair. Councillor Alan Shield, leader of the Durham Independent Group and member for Letgate and Melonsley. In seconding this joint independent budget amendment, I'd make the following comments. The communication media section of Durham County Council includes the County Durham News, should provide a balanced and independent programme of information to all the residents community across County Durham and not to be used predominantly for the benefits of a majority party. Many residents have made repeated comments and have been particularly concerned at the flouting or at best the bending of government Covid nineteen rules and guidelines regarding social distancing when they see photos of political posturing by some of the Labour Cabinet. The significant saving over one point eight million pounds can be more certainly be better utilised by allocating a proportion, some five hundred and seventy nine thousand six hundred pounds of the saving to Members' Neighbourhood Budget Revenue by four point six thousand pounds, increasing the value of councillors' neighbourhood budget to twenty four thousand, which is still only returns that level to seventy two point seven per cent of the original thirty three thousand pounds per councillors' neighbourhood budget. There is no doubt in my mind and with many other local members that as we return to some sort of normality after the easing and lifting of the Covid nineteen restrictions, that councillors will need to play a major part within the local community groups and the provision of additional funding will allow requests for some financial support to be progressed without the necessity of making applications through the A A Ps, which can be deterring effect to some organisations. Which brings me to the issue of further financial support to the highways capital programme and thereby utilising the remaining revenue of four hundred and thirty four thousand six hundred pounds. Analysing my neighbourhood budget over several years since I've been a county councillor, I can advise that on average, half of my budget, like many other members, and in some cases, more than seventy five per cent of my budget, has been used to support necessary improvements to highways and this is after removal of the Lama budget of six thousand pounds per councillor from the previous collective total neighbourhood budgets. This means that other worthy causes, projects including committee groups, youth clubs, resident associations, ward partnerships and many, many others requiring financial assistance and guidance cannot be wholeheartedly supported. If we as elected members are to continue and in some cases as newly elected members, assume the much needed role as committee champions after this unprecedented year, please provide us with the proper means to aspire to that role. I mentioned in last year's budget that it had some merit and pleasingly, this year's budget follows the same trend, continuing to provide local count tax support scheme, welfare assistance and discretionary housing benefit to those disadvantaged and vulnerable residents is both laudable and the proper thing to do. However, there are some concerns in this budget which members believe give rise to concerns. It has been repeatedly stated that Durham County Council operate a predominance of prudent fiscal management, yet here we are following an unprecedented and unrivalled period in our history, other than those experienced during wartime, planning a level of capital investment which is still considered to be disproportionate and insufficiently detailed when we do not know how the years following this pandemic will play out. And with regard to the uncertainty of the comprehensive spending review, fair funding review, long term impacts of the pandemic and finally the implications of Brexit. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Stevens. Councillor Brian Stevens. Councillor Patterson.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. I'm councillor Andrew Patterson, representing the Crook Division and Cabinet Member for Corporate Services and Rural Issues. Chairman, eight years I've been a councillor and eight years councillor Shuttleworth and the Independents has proposed to scrap the County Durham News and each year we keep walking this down. Now, I'm not quite sure why our Independents keep bringing this back to the table when they've been told repeatedly, time and time again at previous budget meetings about our statutory responsibilities. And I've said this previously, so I'm going to say it again, we have got a statutory responsibility at this council to keep our County Durham residents informed about council services. Many of our residents can't access information online or by any other means and they rely on things like the County Durham News or item into the local newspaper to find out what's going on. Our residents face many barriers to accessing information, whether it's down to the rurality, whether it's access to the internet, transport connectivity to our access, our civic buildings or even lack of digital skills or affordability. The fact remains, we've got a duty to communicate and to provide information through various methods to meet our statutory responsibilities under the Equalities Act. The need for an effective and robust communications and marketing team has never been more important than it is right now, especially with Covid. So I find the proposals to effectively scrap the team and make staff compulsory redundant are completely unnecessary and they're not being properly thought through. Now, I'm not sure what the Independents think the staff do, but they're much more than press releases and I can assure them that Cabinet members have not been breaking lockdown for photo opportunities. You probably photographs from a photo bank that we have on the database. Chairman, this particular team promotes Durham as a place to live, to work and to visit and it's absolutely essential that our residents, our local business and our partners are kept informed, they can access the services and the support they need. This team also maintains and updates the website, they coordinate the internal communications with our staff, with our members and they support our partners and they've been absolutely invaluable right throughout Covid, playing a vital role to ensure we can disseminate information very quickly and often at short notice. As an example, we wouldn't have been able to communicate the Covid support brands available for local businesses had it not been for this team. We simply can't do without them. They do play a vital role with our staff working remotely at home and they're an absolute key asset to our H time for any H R team, for any staff communications. Chairman, I simply can't, you know, support this motion and since I've only got my three minutes to speak, I'm sure my colleagues will speak on the the rest of the motion. Thank you.
We'll go back to councillor Stevens. We have councillor Brian Stevens. Therefore, we'll move to councillor Thirties.
Thank you, Chair. I'm councillor Angela Thirties, I represent the Easonton Division, but I'm also the portfolio holder for social inclusion. I'd also like to thank councillor Shuttleworth for the proposed amendment this morning, although it was anticipated. Can I just say that many of our residents rely on Durham County News to find out what's going on across the county and where they can access the support and it's only right that we communicate with them and keep them informed. As my colleagues just previously said, we do have a statutory duty to do this, but I cannot stress enough the importance that the communications and marketing team has had, especially over the previous year and not just for the external face and communications, but the internal comes too. So I agree with my colleague wholeheartedly that the proposal to effectively scrap this team and make them redundant is unfounded. This team does do a great job promoting Durham as the diverse and cultural place it is, but more importantly, over the last year and continuing, because we don't know how much longer we will endure this because it's all still ifs and dependents on the dates going forward. Through this Covid pandemic, it has been essential to ensuring that our residents and partners have been informed about the services and all of the support and in terms of supporting our vulnerable residents and ensuring that the welfare assistance comms have been circulated effectively, this team have been vital. We have had to respond quickly to communicate messages about council tax support, welfare grants, free school meals, Covid support grants and not forgetting the business support grants and in some instances, this has been done within seventy two hours. So I think that's an amazing achievement. But Chair, during twenty twenty an amazing achievement. But Chair, during 2020, our communications and marketing team have successfully provided communications twice to over 75,000 shielded residents to ensure that they knew about support available for food, medical supplies and mental health, for example. But this is also on top of other COVID related messages, which include outbreak control, public awareness, testing, vaccination programmes, the LA7 campaigns, tiers and lockdowns and workplace compliance. And this is also on top of the 506 press releases, the 369 statements, whilst also supporting our online events, one of the council websites of which there is approximately 30, 30, sorry, the Twitter platform, Facebook, WhatsApp and the various other online platforms that we have. And just as a marker, the Facebook reach in an average month is 2.5 million for the corporate DCC platform. So the importance of up-to-date, relevant and quick responsive communications has been vital through COVID, and to remove something this important is something I just cannot support, and I urge everyone in this virtual chamber not to support this amendment proposal. Thank you Chair.
Do we have councillor Brian Stevens? Move on to councillor Tucker.
Good morning Chair, morning colleagues. Tanya Tucker, councillor for Woodhouse Close Division in Bishop Auckland. I, like colleagues, would welcome an increase in my neighbourhood budget. I'd also welcome an increase in the highways budget for our road network, but that's just not practical in these times. I think the budget is fair. The one thing I would like to say is, I don't think my colleagues, councillor Shuttleworth and councillor Shield must be aware of employment law, because to actually make people redundant, you have to be able to substantially prove that those roles in your organisation are no longer necessary. You can't just choose to make people redundant so that you can make savings. Our staff have employment rights, and if I was still a branch secretary for a national union, I'd be hoping that my colleagues in the county council come down on your role with hobnail boots. It's not on proposing to make staff redundant just so you can have more money to spend in your ward. I'm sorry, as much as I would dearly love to have more money to help my organisations, there are better ways. I certainly couldn't, in all conscience, morally and, you know, sort of, it's not on. I'm sorry, I can't support this proposal at all. If you'd proposed something that was workable and was ethical, I might have just, you know, sort of changed my mind, but I'm not supporting a proposal like this. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Crute.
Thank you Chair, I'll be very brief, because I know we have a heavy agenda this morning. I've got support Tanya, Angela and Andrea and everything that they've said. I was at a meeting of the Economy and Enterprise Overview and Scrutiny Committee meeting earlier this week, and one of the agenda items was an update on the regeneration directive response to COVID-19. And I don't think anybody who attended that meeting could have left without understanding fully the role that the communications and marketing teams played throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. So if you're in any doubt about what the corporates, sorry, about what the marketing team and the communications team are doing, please take a look at the agenda from earlier this week, Economy and Enterprise Overview and Scrutiny Committee, on page 33. For those reasons and for the reasons already outlined by the three previous speakers, I'll look forward to supporting this amendment. Thanks Chair.
Councillor Gunn.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Owen Gunn, I represent Wellington and Hunwick Division, and I'm the cabinet member for children and young people services. But on this occasion, I want to, in response to the amendment, I want to focus upon the aspect of highways funding. And I want to say that so far, the future investment in highways maintenance, our budgets actually include an ambitious and extensive capital programme of investment. In total, £124.4 million has been invested in highways over the last five years, where the council, this Labour council, has contributed £42.7 million, and the Department of Transport, £81.7 million. Highways maintenance has always been a priority for the council funding, and it will continue to be a priority. But we need central government to step up to the plate and provide more resources in this hugely important area. Chair, I cannot support these amendments, and I urge everyone to oppose. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have councillor Brian Stevens? I'll briefly pause for any more requests. Councillor Atkinson.
Yes Chair, sorry about that, I took a little while to get my microphone on. Excuse me, just one minute. I'd just comment about the area budgets as well, referring to councillor Shields' point. One thing I've found about my area budget is, the hardest way to spend it is through the community budgets, going into the community and finding projects. They're difficult to find. One of the reasons that they're difficult to find is that quite often people are not fully aware of them, you know, and communications and marketing, we do get the message across, but they're difficult to find. One of the easiest ways to spend the money is to give it back to highways, of course, and give it back to the council, and these are all good projects, drop curbs and things like that, but that is quite an easy way to get rid of the money that. So I would just suggest to councillor Shields, if he puts a little bit of the extra work into going around the community, he might find he's not giving so much back, and he can help better in the community and probably feel a bit better about it that way. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else registered to speak? Bringing councillor Stevens one last time. Councillor Stevens, are you on mute? Is no one else registered to speak? Therefore, bringing councillor Henning as right to reply.
Thank you Chair. In responding, I know we all agree the importance of roads and highways, and that's why, as councillor Owen Gunn has outlined, we already put more funding into roads and highways over and above the national allocation. And that, to be fair, was acknowledged by councillor Shuttleworth. It is important to reiterate that the budget before council today again includes additional highways funding over the allocation that we receive nationally. I cannot agree, as with others, that we should scale back the council's communications to the extent that's proposed in this amendment. And we've already heard from councillors Patterson, Sertes and Tucker, the implications of doing this. I think it can be argued that council communications to our residents are even more important during the pandemic than at any other time. And we've already heard some examples of that in terms of when the council has written out to vulnerable residents, for example, offering help of different sorts during the pandemic. Nor should we assume that people know that that help is available, as a couple of colleagues have pointed out. And I know as well that that letter that we sent out, particularly last April/May time, was very well received, because it did highlight some of the support that was available to residents. And it would have not, you know, it would have been a really unfortunate had we not been able to do that, because we didn't have the, you know, the communications team available to be able to send out that letter that was sent out last spring. So for all of those reasons, albeit we all agree the importance of roads and highways, but this amendment is not the way to do it. We already put in more to highways, and I would urge colleagues to vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll hand over to Legal Democrat Services to take the spin of the voting procedure.
Thank you Chair. As you've already indicated, we'll be using the voting solution within Microsoft Teams as we did in the previous meetings. So just by way of a reminder to members, once the chair has indicated that the vote is open, a box will appear on your screen, which will show the title of the matter which we're voting on, which in this case will be the joint amendment as moved and seconded by councillors Shuttleworth and Shields. The box will show the options to vote for, against or to abstain. Simply select your preference and click submit, and it is very important that you click that submit. And once you've done that, you'll get a green tick with a tick confirming your vote choice, and that indicates that your vote is cast. You can then click done, and the box will disappear from your screen.
And now move to organising the board. We'll be closing the vote now.
Chair, I've had nothing come on my screen for voting.
Me neither.
Nor me.
Yeah, members, we'll run the vote again.
Sorry Chair, councillor Sertes, I haven't gotten anything on my screen this time.
No, I haven't again.
Just need to reset the polls councillors, so just suspend the broadcast while we organise that. Thank you. Just need to reset the polls councillors. So just suspend the broadcast while we organise that. Thank you. Okay, thank you members. We'll just reopen the vote. Okay, just. Thanks members. Just to check, has any other councillors having issues with voting apart from councillor Sexton?
No.
Chairman John, John, sure with that. I had to click the F and it came up and I voted for, but it hadn't said done. So there's been reinstall. I don't know. We might have to do all this manually, I don't know.
Any other members having any issues?
I'm not able to do anything here. There's nothing coming here.
Try the chat function.
Right, let's try that.
Let me count. Councillor Sexton?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I'm sure you've got it in hand, but just if this lends any information. I have voted multiple times because it keeps popping up. And I've done it both ways as per the training. But it came back and I photographed the screen that I have an error and a little red dot. So I don't know if that helps any, but I'm happy to give my vote again verbally if required. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Sexton, do you want to indicate which way you'd like to vote during the chat function?
Okay, thank you councillor Sexton. So members, just for people watching the broadcast, just to explain. So we are expecting 103 votes in response to the amendment. We have 102 recorded via the electronic system. We now have 103 with councillor Sexton's vote just reported in the chat. We propose to close the vote and then we will check the spreadsheet behind the scenes to check that we have got that 103, in which case we will be able to proceed. If not, I'm afraid we will have to proceed to a roll call vote, but hopefully we can avoid that. Thank you.
Thank you members. Total of votes cast 104. We've checked that councillor Sexton's and councillor Kelly's votes have been included within the chat. Therefore for the amendment, 28, against 64 and abstentions 12. Therefore the amendment falls. I'll briefly pause while we go through the vote sheet. Thank you members. Just to remind members that amendments won't appear on the screen as they're in the council's agenda pack. Can I invite councillor Richard Bell to move the Conservative group amendment please?
Thanks Chair, good morning. Richard Bell, Barnard Castle, West Division and leader of the Conservative group at the county council. I move the amendment as printed to introduce free parking in all council car parks for one year from the 1st of April at an estimated cost of £700,000 funded by a one-off contribution from the 15.6 million Covid support grant provided from central government. It's a simple amendment and the logic behind it is simple. As we heard from the leader in his report, the government is putting 19.6 million of future high streets money into Bishop Auckland. Hopefully more will be coming through the Stronger Towns Fund, Durham County Council through the Towns and Villages investment into festival work in Spennymua. And we heard yesterday in economy scrutiny of the increased number of empty shops in our high streets across the county, Chestley Street, Durham etc. All of this investment will not have the positive effect it could have unless you increase town centre footfall. In Bishop Auckland, there is traffic congestion at the big out of town shops at Tyndale with their free parking. Yet if you want to visit the high street, you have to pay to park. In Barnard Castle, we will soon have an out of town supermarket with free parking, yet the town centre one owned by Durham County Council charges. It is an obvious thing to do to increase footfall, stimulate our high streets and stimulate the economy as we come out of Covid. Neighbouring councils in Tees Valley like Darnington have already done it. North Ardenham has done it. They all report positive effects on traders and footfall. Furthermore, it is safer from a Covid perspective to shop locally. It is greener from a carbon dioxide emissions perspective to shop locally. And our high streets really need the customers, shops, cafes and so on. And finally, I would just say before you say that you can't afford it, we're not requiring any cuts like other amendments to finance this. It's coming from a 15.6 million Covid support grant provided by central government, which is as yet unallocated. To me, it is a very simple, a very clear and a positive way that the council could actually improve our towns centres at minimal cost and I commend the amendment for your approval. Thank you Chair.
Can I have a second to the amendment?
Thank you Chair. It's councillor James Rollinson, Barnard Castle East. I'd like to second the amendment and reserve my right to speak at the end of the... At the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Marshall?
Thanks Chair. Can I thank councillor Bell for his proposed amendment to the budget? I think the starting point for this has got to be the comments made by the deputy leader councillor Napier at the beginning around the the uncertainty of the future, in particular with some of the costs of Covid. And I expect the bill of this council to run into well excess of the funds that have been provided by central government. But I do believe that all members right across all political persuasions on the council would agree that we need to see thriving town centres where people can visit, shop locally and invest in our local economy, creating local jobs and local wealth. Like many sectors, our town centres have been adversely impacted by the pandemic and the consequential national and local restrictions. Our town centres have however been challenged for a number of years from the change in shop and habits, the move to online shopping and also from the impact of an outdated business rate system, something that I previously called on the government to redress the balance of taxation between high streets and online businesses to help combat this. The council also recently committed investment through Towns and Villages through the additional £25 million to support local centres as part of a £750 million investment that's already ongoing. That aside, whilst I totally agree with the sentiments of this budget proposal, I think it's important we properly review the proposal for free parking in the context of a number of clear considerations. And these should include the wider town centre regeneration across our county and recovery, including links to events and activities in the centres. Displacement of spaces... Displacement of spaces could invariably be taken up from other non-council parking or from people who work in the centres, which would not benefit the town centre footfall at all. And the impact on on-street parking arrangements, the impact on our parks, such as the Riverside and Hardwick Park, where car parks have operated capacity throughout the majority of the pandemic, and the Covid nineteen funding and capacity to fund the reduction in charges. Chair, in proposing that we reject this amendment, as proposed, however, I would ask council to note that I will ask officers to bring forward a report in a few weeks' time to Cabinet on measures that can be taken to increase footfall into our town centres. This will fully consider the options for free parking and look to extend the opportunities for free parking in the wider context I've set out. We'll also consider the wider issues of what attracts people into our town centres and what more can be done on this front through events and other attractions. This needs to be carefully thought through, Chairman, and for the reasons set out, I cannot support the amendment. However, as I've said, I'll ask officers to bring forward a report to the next cabinet meeting looking at the wider options of increasing footfall into our town centres. Thank you.
Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to refer to part of what councillor Mr Marshall referred to. I listened very carefully to councillor Bell, and I heard him talk about town centre car parks. But this will also have an impact upon the Riverside car park and directly upon Hardwick Country Park. We've had tremendous problems, Madam Chair, during this recent lockdown with people indiscriminately parking on the A177, the A689, into Hardwick Hall itself, which is closed, and also into the farms. It has caused tremendous problems, and we, as local councillors, have had to have bollards put up and parking prevented. So my concern is the effect it would have on Hardwick Country Park, et cetera, because we've had to stop parking on main roads to stop at the danger. I had hoped councillor Howell would have been here, but clearly he's had to leave as my Member of Parliament. But I would ask our Conservative colleagues to lobby on our behalf and with us for car parking in hospitals to be free. As many of you know, my wife has been in and out during the pandemic to hospital. As well as having to put up and have the concern of not being able to see my wife, but just to deliver clothes at doors, I've had to find out and make sure I've had four pounds in my car every day to visit my wife so that I could park in the car park to deliver my wife clothings. I would beg my Conservative colleagues to lobby their Conservative MPs to take away charges in hospitals, because I believe that would have a bigger impact upon the residents of Durham. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councillor Tugger?
Thank you, Chair. In Bishop Auckland, there's a lot of residents have been asking for free parking in the town centre for quite a while now. But at the present time, I don't think it's actually practical to have free parking in the town centre and take money away from Covid support. I think the amount of money is not going to be enough to help with this problem right across our county and to use even a small amount of it just to give free parking at this particular time, I think, would be short-sighted. I welcome councillor Marshall's proposal that we, as an authority, re-look at how we can regenerate our town centres, given the other areas of improvement that are currently going on. So I won't be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Sirtis?
Thank you, Chair. Can I also thank councillor Bell for his proposed amendment? Chair, I can't support these proposals for all of the reasons set out by councillor Marshall, but also because, I mean, I wholeheartedly support the increase in footfall across all of our villages and towns and city centre locations, don't get me wrong. But the proposals as put forward do nothing to address social inclusion. For me, many households don't have a car, so I just wonder how them residents will benefit from it. And the other thing is, is I'm unconvinced that councillor Bell has properly thought through the whole displacement issue and other real concerns that my colleagues previously mentioned and identified. For me, I would rather wait and welcome the wider consideration of such matters within the report previously mentioned going to Cabinet. And for these reasons, I'll be voting against this amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Clare?
Thank you, Chair. At least we're not being compared to communist Russia this month. But this amendment is just as irresponsible an election dog whistle. I was on the Economy Review Group, which was told and accepted and took a report that was accepted by Cabinet that, counterintuitively, offering free parking actually reduces the retail footfall. I'm going to leave councillor Beatty, who I understand is going to speak later. She'll know much more about it than I, to talk about that with her. So therefore, I've just got two points to add to this debate. First, as climate champion, there are thousands of people all over the county who'll be expecting me to address this proposal in the context of our climate emergency and green recovery. And I find it hypocritical that after all their expressed joy at the reduction of traffic during the pandemic and indeed all the money that they've put into cycling and walking, the only thing the Tories can think of to suggest for a Covid recovery budget of four hundred million pounds is let's get back to more cars and let's fill up our town centres with exhaust emissions again. And those climate-concerned residents would want me to say that more cars are not the answer. And secondly, as councillor Sirtis has indicated, is it not stereotypical Tory that faced with perhaps a laudable desire to increase footfall in the town centres, their only pitch is to the car owner, when we have one in three residents and one in four households in the county who do not own a car? And I'll leave it to members' intelligence to consider why the Tories are nodding to the car owners of the county and neglecting those people who cannot afford a car. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm going to support the amendment. But if it isn't agreed today, then I do urge colleagues, and thanks to councillor Marshall for mentioning that he will take a look at it again, to look at free after three as a more general principle during the recovery. It's a very successful scheme in the Road to Christmas. I have repeatedly called for this since we started talking in Durham about recovery last June. And I really would urge colleagues to think about that option as being a really positive way of bringing people back into town. We can't pretend that people don't have cars. It would be wonderful to think that we could do without, but at this point in time, we're not there. So, thank you.
Councillor Beatty?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, councillor Clare did second guess what I was actually going to say. As the Chair of Economy and Enterprise at that point in time, it would be remiss if I didn't actually make mention of the work of the Economy and Enterprise Committee, specifically the Town Centre Review document, which actually its findings articulated that free car parking wasn't advisable specifically around in locations such as commuter belts, where town centre employees were actually blocking bays, or worse still, people were parking free and then commuting specifically on the rail routes to larger areas such as Newcastle or other city centres. So I welcome what councillor Marshall's actually suggested, a review by officers, because it is quite timely. That is now two years ago. But certainly, it would make a mockery of the huge amount of work and dedication committed by members on the committee. And if I remember rightly, I think councillor Bell was actually on that committee as well and will have actually read those findings. And I would encourage everybody to read that report that did go to Cabinet. Thank you.
Councillor Bainbridge?
Good morning, councillor Bainbridge for Chester East. I've got to say, I've got to support the amendment because we've got to look at our front street, at Chestley Street. I know we've had the Convern opening, and we've got to try and work with what we've got. And the shops we've got now, we're finding it very hard to hang on to. So yes, I will be going for the amendment, and I'm sorry that councillor Clare brought up a negative attitude towards it. Well, how is the Ariston Centre and Washington Gallery surviving with free car parking? And all our little towns is dying. So therefore, yes, I've got to support the amendment for free car parking in our small towns just for one year to keep our businesses going after this Covid nineteen. Thank you very much.
Councillor Sexton?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm going to support this motion as a proud Sestry. And we've been asking for help on our front street. In the first six months of me being elected, I worked with other councils, and we got the transferable parking tickets, which were successful. There is evidence, I am on that same committee, that there isn't a silver bullet for this. It is complex. But what I'd say is, is three and a half years ago, we started this report, and it was submitted, as councillor Beatty just said, over two years ago. This local authority's done nothing. So now they're being pressured to do something. They want to push it down the grass. And I'd say to councillor Clare, I won't be lectured by somebody who voted to put the headquarters in the middle of a city centre, which is going to attract people to drive to work. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Wilks?
Good morning, Chair. Councillor Mark Wilks, Framwell Gate and Newton Hall. Some of the Labour councillors don't seem to realise the situation our town centres are currently in and our city centre. We're coming out of the worst crash in three hundred and nine years, I think it is. Anything we can do to promote getting people back into our town centres and Durham city centre, we have to look at and consider. This isn't an open-ended, forever proposal that's being put forward by councillor Bell. And I would point one other thing out as well. At the moment, a huge number of people who would normally take public transport are scared of taking public transport. They want to use their car because it's safe to do so. And people are going to feel like that for quite a long time to come, I have a feeling. We need to give everybody the opportunity that we can and to get our businesses back open over the next, the coming months. And I am quite flabbergasted at some of the Labour comments. And I've come to the conclusion that it's just, let's just speak against everything that comes from any opposition councillor, full stop, regardless. It doesn't matter how important it is, how good a proposal it is, we'll just say no because they're not Labour. Well, you can see from some of the Labour councillors who've resigned from the party over the last few years because of the way that they've been treated, that that's just the way it is in this county, unfortunately. We'll see how the next motions come along afterwards. I'm sure it'll be the same result.
Councillor Reed?
Good morning, Chair. Thank you. I'm councillor Anne Reid, and I'm the councillor for the Crook division. I would like just to say that I am for this amendment, and the reason being that in Crook, we benefit from free parking. Free parking on our marketplace, free parking in both our supermarkets, free parking in our GP surgery car park, free parking for the civic centre staff, Durham County Council Civic Centre. And also, we have free parking in front of the civic centre for its disabled parking. I see the benefit of all of that. Our shops, if you come to Crook, you'd be very welcome. You will see that our shops are thriving. We have only one shop that is empty. So I see the benefit of that. But I would like to also just to refer to what councillor John Robinson said about charges at the hospital. I have other information regarding that, and so I would like you, if someone can just check this out. Because I know residents who have actually been across to Durham Hospital, they've visited the maternity department, and it's free parking there. So there seems to be some discrepancy if councillor Robinson has had to go along and say to his wife and had to pay the four pounds, when some of my residents who probably go to the same hospital and attend the maternity hospital and don't have to pay. So I think that really needs to be sorted out. It's a little bit unfair on councillor Robinson and his scenario. So just to finally say, yes, I will be for that amendment. Thank you very much.
Councillor Atkinson?
Yes, Chair. Just like to take a moment to collect myself. I usually do after councillor Wilk speaks. The thing is, the problem I've got with this is this use of the word free. Free car parks. Free car parks. Car parks don't look after themselves. They're all eating corn. And yes, it's free to the person whose car is in there at that particular time, but they're not free car parks. They need to be looked after, and any revenue that was surplus, if there were any at all, would be spent elsewhere, which would have to be paid for by something else. So if it's free to the person in the car, that's fine, but it won't be free to the taxpayer. So it's just a wary tale of the word free from my point of view. Thank you.
Councillor Madison? Councillor Liz Madison?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to say that the new Festival Walk redevelopment will include a car park that's been provided from a budget from Durham County Council, which has been in place for some years now. There has been debate with regard to whether there should be a charge on this car park. Now, currently, all car parking within Spennymoor is free. This will decimate our local economy if charges are implemented. I do support the amendment that's been put forward. I do believe that it's necessary that we have free parking to get our economy up and running again. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Patterson?
Thanks, Chair. I wasn't going to speak this morning on this until councillor Reed's mentioned about the car parks in Crook. And yes, we do have free car parking, but as a retailer, I can speak firsthand about experience that our local businesses there aren't thriving. They are struggling and they still have, you know, a lot of barriers, a lot of problems because of Covid. And free car parking across the piece for every town and village isn't necessarily the answer, because one size doesn't fit all. And I think we need to think very carefully about how we approach this. So listening to the debate, it seems to me that the more sensible approach is to take this away, as councillor Marshall's alluded to, and look at it in much further detail. Take account of the scrutiny report that we, in the work that was done by the Economy and Enterprise overview and scrutiny committee. You know, and I think that that's the most sensible thing that we need to do. So for that reason, I can't support the amendment. The thing that amazes me most, I think, is the fact that we've been given these millions of pounds for Covid support from central government. And the only thing that our Conservative colleagues wants to do with that is actually, you know, put free parking across the board. I can think of a million and one other uses that we need for Covid support right now, you know, across the county, from helping our schools out, from ICT support, from PPE. There's a whole raft of them, but I'm not going to go into that detail, Chair. I just think that we need to take this away, look at it in detail, because one size doesn't fit all for all of our town centres. Thank you.
Councillor Hobgood?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Again, a bit like councillor Patterson, I wasn't going to speak on this motion. I do, however, support it, but I felt I needed to after councillor Atkinson mentioned about it's not free. It's clearly not free for the council, which is why I assume councillor Bell has put in his motion exactly how it's going to be paid for. It's free for the consumer, and the idea behind it, I fully endorse. We want to get our economy back up and running. We want to get our towns, our village centres, our cities back up and running. And if for one year this is what it costs, then I think it's leading by example to move forwards and say that we're supporting our retailers and we want people to come back into our cities instead of go off to the metro centre, where they'll be able to park free of charge all day and spend their money there instead of local County Durham towns and villages.
Councillor McKeon?
Thank you, Chair. I also wasn't going to come in and speak until I heard some of the comments earlier. In Coxo, anyone who goes through it can see we've got a thriving high street. We've got a real spread of different kinds of shops, from boutiques to an award-winning butchers and cafes and hairdressers, and it's a lovely an award-winning butchers and cafes and hairdressers and it's a lovely village and it's a lovely high street. But we had a problem a couple of years ago. We had our traders come to us and tell us as councillors that they were seeing their footfall decline because people were using the parking on the front street to park in the morning, either get into a carpool or get into their bus and basically just take up a parking space for the entire day. And it took a lot of work, but we managed to get a working parking scheme for our front street. Because just simply having unrestricted free parking actually did more damage to the high street than it did good. Because it meant that the people who needed to access the shops in the village centre couldn't. There were carpoolers, there were people there who were just taking the spaces and not giving them up to the people who needed them. My worry is that by taking away parking charges and restrictions of any kind that we have an impact that we haven't foreseen and that's more detrimental at this time. I just don't think it's a proposal that is talked through well enough, just on my own experience as a local member.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much, Chair. In Concert, we already have free parking, so it's not as, you know, this wouldn't change a great deal for us, but just to pass on the experience that Concert had in the past. Traders created an association because they were very concerned that it was very difficult to get parked in Concert because people were parking there all day and then heading off to Newcastle where, and on the, using public transport and everything was just blocked. So, you know, there was changes that we could put in. So I definitely support councillor Marshall taking a closer look at this on a wider basis. Because when we did look at it on Economy, as councillor Beatty and Patterson said, it was, we didn't know that there was different solutions for different areas. Just in relation to the Liberal Democrat comment that we never accept motions and we just fought against everything. We didn't do that a couple of years ago. We accepted their motion and when it became a substantive motion, the Liberal Democrats then voted against it.
Thank you. Counselor Wilkes, I noticed you've requested the right to speak, but you've already spoken in the debate, so you can only raise an issue if it's a point of order.
It was only because Jim Atkinson raised my name, Jim Atkinson, who lives in Newton.
Thank you, councillor. Thanks. We'll move on. Counselor Shield.
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify the points made by councillor McKeon and councillor Malcolm Clark. Yes, Concert did have an issue because we had free car parking behind Middle Street. And it was abused by lots of motorists parking their full time and going off to the metro centre. However, that was resolved by putting, as lots of other supermarket car parks do, by putting a restriction on the time limited availability that you could have for free parking. So if we are going to consider that the option of free parking, I believe it should be time limited. I think it should be restricted within certain periods to encourage people to use the high street and our town centres, rather than, as we know, the out-of-town town centres, which provide that opportunity. And we know that supermarkets don't just deliver supermarket goods, as in food, they deliver everything these days. And if our high streets have to compete, then so be it. I will be supporting this motion, Chair. Thank you.
Counselor Quinn.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, I'm from Shilton and Dean Valley. We have free car parking, but we also have issues with that. We've got people that abuse the car parks by parking vehicles that are either off-road or need repairs doing to them. We have issues with fly tipping that also gets dumped in our car parks. So, you know, one size does not fit all and I think everything does need to be on its own merits. I suggest that we take up councillor Marshals' offer and bring this back to our, you know, to debate it at a further meeting. And I really do think that we could use this Covid recovery money for a lot more better things than to be given free car parking. Yes, I want to see every single high street thrive, including our own. But, you know, we need to get things in perspective here and Covid has had a massive hit on every single community in this country. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Got back on, but I've missed Anne Reid talking.
Can councillors remain on mute, please, if you're not speaking? Anyone else registered to speak? I'll briefly pause before bringing in councillor Rollinson. Can I bring in councillor Rollinson, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased that this has caused such a debate. It shows that, you know, everybody is thinking about it. I think the Labour members have missed what councillor Napier has already said. He said in his seconding of the MFTP that it was, they were using, we were using the Covid money to make up the difference on the amount of money that is being missed by the car parks not being used during Covid lockdowns. It's amazing, absolutely amazing. And not to use the Covid money to just give free parking is unbelievable. I can't understand the thinking behind it. The seven hundred thousand pounds last year for car parking, that kind of money in people's pockets is going to help them go towards our town centres, helping our businesses who have been probably decimated by the Covid pandemic. It's unbelievable. The town centres need as much help as possible. And this amendment would give that. I'm afraid councillor Marshall's half-hearted attempt at appeasing the Labour members, it doesn't help people now and people need it now, especially our businesses in town centres. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I know councillor Napier, but we've already closed the debate in terms of that. I'll bring in councillor Hennig.
Yeah, I need to bring a point of order then, because I've been misquoted by councillor Rollinson. I'm sure it's not intended. What I stated when I seconded the MTF in the budget was that we will face additional costs and loss of income from amongst other things. And that was the sustainability support on adult social care, waste disposal and refuse collection, lost income from leisure, car parking theatres, planning fees and building control. And all of these need to be taken into consideration when setting the budget. Because I don't believe that the fourteen point nine million will cover those elements of the pressures. So it wasn't saying that we should be using that with regards to free car parking.
I'll bring back councillor Hennig to close the debate.
Thanks, Chair. First of all, can I thank councillor Bell for his amendments? And I very much agree that we need to look at everything we can to increase footfall in our town centres. And we've already talked about our major investment in terms of towns and villages and our wider economic regeneration programme, which is aimed at increasing economic activity across County Durham. So I don't think anybody disagrees with that priority around increasing economic viability across the piece. And I think that there are two issues which we need to bear in mind. The first of which was just touched on by councillor Napier and I'm very pleased he did come in because I think he was the first person to raise this. Which is that where the money that's been announced for the government, we haven't yet got a breakdown of what is needed from that. And nobody seems to have asked that question, who's just participated in the last ten or fifteen minutes debates. Now, we know that over this last year, with other councils, Durham County Council has needed all the money it's received from government and actually a bit more, i.e. the money that we've got, while welcome, hasn't quite been enough. So if that's the situation again next year, that it's not quite enough and we're already starting to sort of use that for something else, then the implication of that is that something else that we need the money for, we won't be able to afford. But we don't have that information at the moment and I do think that's a big problem because we are drawing on a budget that we, that none of us have a breakdown in front of us and what that budget's going to be used for. So I do think the point that councillor Napier has just made is an important one. I think the other side of this is, I have to say, is the practicality of the proposal and is, let's, you know, we need to take the amendment as has been moved, which is to move to free parking across the piece. So that means free parking in all car parks. I don't know if it also means on-street parking in Durham city or not, but it certainly means the car parks at Riverside and Hardwick, for example, as well as in town centres. And the issue here is the practicality. At the moment, in, for example, Chesterley Street, the tariff goes up after two hours to stop people parking all day. Councillor Bell's motion removes that. What is the effect of that? Likely that spaces fill up with commuters and others all day, therefore limiting the number of people that can come in. And that was the case. And I would hate to go back to a situation, for example, at Sestria Primary School in Chester Street, where the parents can't get parked because all the spaces are full, because basically it's free parking, people have just left their cars, some of whom might be commuting to Newcastle and so on. So we need to look at this. Councillor Marshall made the offer to look at it. We will bring a paper to Cabinet to look at extending free parking, quite rightly. But we need to take the practicalities into consideration raised by councillor Tucker, councillor Shields and others. Because if we just make it completely free, then the dangerous spaces will fill up all day. And I note that even Darlington, which was quoted, only has the first two hours free and there is a reason for that. And we need to look at this. So I would hope that we would take councillor Marshall up. I prefer that this would be withdrawn. But I would hope that we can look to that cabinet report so we can extend free parking because we all agree that we need to improve.
Thank you. We'll now move to the vote. Members having any, before the vote, we'll check if any members having any issues. Please do let us know and indicate your vote through the chat function.
Chair, I've submitted a vote. It looks like it's asking me to vote again.
Thanks, members. Before we close the vote, can I check that any of the members having difficulties? If you are struggling, can you indicate your vote through the chat function, please?
Chair, I'm afraid I have not got.
Your mood, councillor?
Did you get that, Chair? It's Patricia Jopling. I could not vote because I have no means of doing it. There's nothing in the chat function and nothing on the screen.
Councillor Jopling, if you'd like to indicate which way you're voting in the chat, we'll make sure your vote's recorded when it's closed.
Thank you.
Chairman, it's councillor Hobson's here. I have voted and the screen didn't change. But now it's come back and it's empty. So can you just check that you received my vote, please?
When we close the vote, councillors, we will check that all votes have been recorded against the number that we're expecting.
Thank you.
We're closing the vote now, members.
Chair, I put my vote in the chat function, but I don't think it's registered. Oh, I think it might be. Sorry. Yes, thank you.
Thanks, members. Hundred and four votes have been cast. For the amendment, forty. Against, sixty-four. And abstentions, zero. I'll just pause while we go through the vote sheet. Thank you, members. Re-amendments have been proposed by the Liberal Democrat Group. Can I invite councillor Amanda Hopgood to move the first Liberal Democrat amendment, please?
Thank you, Chair. Before I move the motion, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the finance officers for their time and professionalism in working with all groups on the budget amendments. And you'd be pleased to know that this motion isn't going to cost the council anything. In addition to what the budget sets out, it's just a change in the way that we allocate some of the funding. The proposal is to top slice 1.26 million from the 4.2 million allocation to the AAPs from the Town and Villages Reserve and provide £10,000 allocation to each county councillor so that it can be spent within their wards. In moving this motion, I do so in order to truly meet paragraph twenty-nine of the paper agreed by Cabinet on the tenth of February, that's to ensure that all areas of the county will benefit from towns and villagers' funding. There are few people on this council who are as positive about or have served on an AAP for as long as I have. And it is no way a criticism of the AAPs administering of this budget. But the AAPs in some places serve large geographical areas, and in many cases, members do not sit on the boards. In addition, it does concern me that many projects, how many projects will be delivered when the council have set a cap of £30,000 for feasibility studies for these projects? The number of places this fund can reach has the potential to be very limited. This motion, as I said, doesn't take money away from the allocated fund or the facility for areas to work together. What it does do is put in place what the scheme was meant for, and that is to ensure that all areas of the county have the opportunity to deliver a project for all residents of County Durham. Indeed, councillor Napier said earlier on that he supports levelling up. That's what this fund should be about. And we should set an example and start here by passing this motion and making sure that all areas of the county have the opportunity to see investments in their areas. So ask all members to consider supporting the motion today, please.
Can I have a second to the amendment, please?
Craig Martin, county councillor for North Lodge in Chesterley Street. I'll second the motion, but I'll reserve the right to speak until the end of the debate. Thank you.
Councillor Tucker?
Chair, thank you. I welcome councillor Hopgood's motion, because I've already said that I would welcome, and I'm assuming that quite a lot of our members would welcome the opportunity to be able to help more of our smaller projects in our communities. AAP funding and the team that work within our AAPs do an absolutely fantastic job. But I think there are areas of our, our local communities that, as members, we know more about and are able to help through small grants, as well as our neighbourhood budgets. I think sometimes some of our projects, especially in my area, some of my residents don't feel it appropriate to go for the AAP funding because they only want small amounts of money. And sometimes, as you know, our budgets are stretched. We, we, we say we'll, we'll, we'll fund things and we run out of money. So I do welcome the extra because some of my smaller projects would really benefit from being able to access my neighbourhood budget, rather than actually go through a full application process through the AAP, which at the end of the day may not be approved. So I think this is a much fairer way of, of sharing this extra resource that's been allocated to AAPs. And I do welcome the, the motion, so I will be supporting this. I think it's a better way for us as members to get further involved in our communities and ensure that our money goes to the right place. Thank you.
Councillor Gunn?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Owen Gunn. I represent Wellington and Hunwick Division, and I'm the cabinet member for Children and Young People's Services. Can, can I remind councillor Hopgood and also councillor Tucker that the area action partnerships established by this Labour council were set up to give people in our county a greater choice and voice in local affairs? And I know that councillor Brian Stephens is incredibly proud, as we all are, of what those area action partnerships have achieved for our communities over the years, many years, despite the challenges of austerity and budget resources, budget pressures, rather. Central to this success has been the funding that we provide, but also the autonomy of the area action partnership boards to identify the priorities for their areas. And this measure, it's not intended to increase the revenue available to individual members. It's designed to help the towns, villagers and localities across County Durham, and to increase the funding available for those priorities. And again, I remind everyone that that of our hundred and twenty-six members, they all receive an annual allocation of £19,400. And the revenue budget cost of this allocation totals £680,000, and a capital budget cost of over 1.7 million. I would like to say that the Lib Dems call themselves the party of community politics, and yet this amendment proposes taking money away from communities. So do they not realise that the amendment takes money from our communities? I actually look forward to the Lib Dems' election leaflet advocating that they no longer support community involvement, community decisions and community spending. I oppose the amendment, Chair, and I urge all members to do the same. Thank you.
Councillor Madison?
Thank you, Chair. I support councillor Hopgood's motion for the following reasons. At last year's budget setting, I presented a motion asking for £500,000 from the Towns and Villages Fund to be allocated to all AAPs across the county, to be used specifically for regeneration projects. In my own area, we have had to use members' neighbourhood funding to support such regeneration projects. This amendment from last year was voted down, but it's good to see that £300,000 has now been allocated to all AAPs across the area. In securing for each councillor £10,000 from this, each from this £300,000, this is another opportunity for local members who know their areas well and often speak on behalf of the silent majority to be able to invest in important local priorities that they have identified, including unadopted footways and highways, where the council has not provided specific budgetary support since a scheme that was established in 2015 came to an end last year. I would have liked a £500,000 uplift on the highways budget to cover the continuation of the scheme, but this wasn't possible. So I will, going forward, use neighbourhood funding for that. If this motion is not supported, then I hope to see in next year's budget an allocated amount, rather than allocate from my neighbourhood funding, for this particular unadopted roads and footpaths, and to have a project plan that will gradually reduce on the number of unadopted roads and pathways across the county. And in doing so, also of a levelling up agenda for all communities and areas across County Durham who suffer from environmental issues and potential trips and falls and cause claims on the council. Thank you.
Councillor Bell?
Thanks, Chair. I support this amendment because it's all about giving a measure of fairness across the county and ensuring that no council division is bypassed or left behind. I think it's important to recognise that there are three elements to the towns and villages' investment at the moment. There's the 4.2 million directed to the AAPs, which is what we're talking about here. 20.8 million directed to various programmes across the county by the council centrally. For example, £4.5 million to Horden Regeneration. So this is quite a small proportion of the total of that. And if you look at the even bigger programme of investment, the £750 million that was quoted in the cabinet report, ranging thereby AAP area from £1 million in Teasdale to £219 million in East Durham, that's a factor of 168 times more in East Durham than Teasdale. And there may well be, I'm sure there are reasons for spending more in East Durham, but 168 times more? The problem with that £750 million is that it wasn't specified in detail in the report. We don't know how much of that is council money, and we don't know how much of that is private or partner money. But there is a real fear that some areas will lose out completely from the towns and villages' investment. And not giving councillors through their neighbourhood funding an oar in that makes real unfairness a possibility. So I support this amendment. In answer to the point that it takes money away from communities, that's patent nonsense. A councillor spends their money in anywhere they like. You can spend it anywhere in your AAP area, indeed across the county. A councillor can combine with other councillors in an AAP or indeed supplement an area project. But what this amendment would do would ensure that no council division in the county would be bypassed by towns and villages' investment. And I'm afraid on the evidence of all the documentation and the, and the sums that have been announced to date, there is a big danger that certain areas will be bypassed. So I support the amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Shields?
Thank you, Chair. A little surprised and disappointed at the comments from councillor Gunn. Taking away this money from the communities is a completely erroneous statement. In actual fact, it lends itself greater to the community, because basically councillors get contacted by, on a regular basis, by lots of groups, be they rest associations, partnerships for support. And sometimes they aren't prepared to take this forward to the area action partnership. So I previously mentioned that we are considered to be community champions. And in this follow-up to this unprecedented, precedent view, it provides us the, the opportunity of providing that additional support, which is so much needed. And just to follow on from what councillor Bell has said, I raised serious concerns about the way that the planned investment of £746.8 million was to be allocated. And I make no apologies for being parochial, being concerned that the Derwent Valley, with a population of 46,500 people, were only going to get £6.8 million, which equates to £147 per head of population. The response from the portfolio holder was not convincing, and therefore I took this opportunity of taking it up with the head of service and the corporate director. And I was actually told at a meeting of the Economy and Enterprise overview and scrutiny meeting, which was yesterday, that there is an additional potential, £78 million, rising to me perhaps even 200 to 250 million for the Derwent Valley AAP. Whilst this additional funding is encouraging, it could be considered a very erroneous statement, unless the scope of the investment, private, public and Durham County Council funding, is more clearly defined, rationalised. That's fine, and concise. And it also needs to reflect the actual consultation undertaken. And just to remind those who were involved, the Derwent Valley was the first in the consultation programme and was beset by significant connectivity issues, as can be the Norman rule-based communities, but which prevented many residents from participating in this consultation. This gives the opportunity for elected members to truly represent their people, and I wholeheartedly support this amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Sexton?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Councillor Paul Sexton, Chesterley Street South. I support this amendment. I have to say, I agree, it's not political, but I think councillor Gunn's intentions were probably valid. The statement was a bit erroneous. The APs for me are, do a great job, but they are controlled. Let's, let's not pretend they're not. I've been on the AP and I get what's put in front of me to vote on. True democracy is the elected members deciding what's best for their area. And that's why I struggle with a unitary council, if I'm honest. What better way to demonstrate to the public that there's a little bit of extra money to put it back into their communities? What better way than to allow their own elected members, their elected members, they voted for. People in Chesterley Street have people in Bishop Auckland and vice versa, voting on things that impact them. That's the downside of a unitary council. This is a small slice, as councillor Hopgood has said, which can do great for our towns and our villages. Why not let us do it? And, you know, we may reap some great benefits. Please just don't pause it for the sake of pausing it. It's a fabulous idea. Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair. There's nothing in the current way that the AAPs function that prevents councillors supporting projects in their own areas. In our AAP, all the local councillors are members of the board, but in some other areas, that won't be the case. But if you're a local councillor and you're not on your AAP board, what's to prevent you collaborating with those that are on the board and putting forward proposals for projects in your area? Projects should be supported on their merits, not their geography. And I think it rather smacks of patronage to think that councillors might know better than the AAP board, projects that should be represented. The AAP boards have representations from all the local partner agencies and public reps. And I think to suggest that councillors might know better how the AAP board should be spending its money is just slightly patronising. So I can't support this amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Adam?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be voting against this particular amendment as well. However, it is pleasing to hear councillor Hopgood praising the council for its, for the budget and for its medium-term financial plan, and supporting the officers in this Labour council to put forward another excellent budget. But as I said, this particular amendment is actually a gimmick. It is a typical gimmick that comes from our Liberal Democrat colleagues. And this also happens at scrutiny, as happened at the Economy and Enterprise yesterday. This stunt is a typical Tory-type policy, where the top slice money from existing budgets and give it in one hand and then take it away in another. This is no new money. I would, I may have supported this if this I would, I may have supported this if this may have been new money, but it clearly isn't. It is purely a top slice. And I agree with my fellow colleagues councillor Gunn and councillor Smith. This is a way of reducing democracy within our AAPs who do an absolutely fantastic job for our community. This will take away the ability of our local residents to actually make the decision about where money is spent. Thanks Chair, I'll be voting against it.
councillor Stevenson?
Good morning everyone.
councillor Stevenson and councillor Hopgood wants to bring in a point of order?
No problem.
Thank you Chair. Just in the same way as councillor Napier did, I wish to correct councillor Adam for the missed quoting of what I said. I think what you'll find I said was I thanked the officers for their time, the finance officers for their time in working with opposition members to come up with their budget amendments. So I'd be most grateful if you wouldn't try and put words in my mouth of something you want me to say, but I actually didn't.
councillor Stevenson?
Good morning. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak. I do take great exception at councillor Sexton's comments that AAPs are controlled. As the vice chair of my AAP, you know, with a public chair, public representative in the chair, it's an opportunity for people to come together to be able to discuss and debate and look at the problems in their local area and see if there's ways that we can come up collectively to put those things right. You know, I use my neighbourhood budget money, the same as everyone else does. And I just think it's very, very wrong and I will not be able to support something that is quite literally, no matter what's been anybody wants to put on it, which has taken money away and control away from the community to put it in the hands of individuals. So very sorry, will not be supporting this motion.
councillor Shuttleworth?
Yeah, thanks Chair. I am going to support this motion. And the reason I'm going to support it is when the unitary bid was first put ahead, and there's only me can say this because nobody else was here around them times. This, this, the fifty thousand pound per ward was going to be given. Then it was halved because there was two members, which is fair enough. That's twenty five thousand pound per member. Now that's been, more than twenty percent's been taken out. If you take inflation off that, that takes it to probably thirty five percent. So if we were all given the ten thousand pound, it maybe brings you back to somewhat of a level playing field. And it's all right councillor Stevenson's saying it shouldn't be in the hands of an individual. I think we'll all find that out on the sixth of May because we're all going to be elected or not elected as individuals or people or members of parties. And it's down to the people who's elected. They're elected to represent and make decisions. Thank you.
councillor Sexton, you have a point of order?
Yes Chair, yes Chair, just on the comments just made there. When I say controlled, the interpretation of control means it's proportional representation of the, my point was that as an elected member, I am not on the AAP, the largest ward in Chestly Street. And I have to wait my turn while independent members, a lot of them appointed by the majority party we know in Chestly Street are on there. They're not elected, they're appointed. Thank you Chair.
councillor McKeon?
Thank you Chair. I think it was councillor Sexton who asked what could be more democratic than letting councillors spend this amount of money? And the answer quite simply is letting residents spend it directly. The AAPs are the arm that we use to officially engage with residents in this way. And I just don't see why the money should go directly to councillors when as a councillor who sits on the AAP board and who also sits on the task and finish group, I've seen projects from my own area come through, through AAP funding rounds that I didn't even know about and that I've been able to support. I think that the largest number of ways that we can possibly get people to engage with the council, AAPs and councillors, I think the more we have of that, the better. So I will not be supporting this motion.
councillor Temple?
Chair, despite the apparent futility of speaking in this debate, since the Labour Party have clearly been whipped to vote against this amendment, I want to speak both in defence of councillor Hopgood and of the Liberal Democrats. Anyone who's attended this chamber regularly will know that councillor Hopgood doesn't go in for stunts. She is one of the most reasonable, thoughtful members of this council. And I think it would be right for all of us to show respect to each other rather than throwing insults. In terms of the Liberal Democrats, clearly we are not talking about reducing investment in the community, only in choosing a different way of allocating it from that which has already been proposed in the budget. So that is not taking money away from the community. It's a matter of philosophy whether you think one way or another is better. But can we actually vote on this amendment on its merits rather than purely out of dogma? Thank you Chair.
councillor Napier?
Thank you Chair. And I wasn't, like many members, I wasn't going to speak on this. But it's in, I want to reply to councillor Bell. I'm really disappointed in his statement, but not shocked because nothing shocks me in politics where I didn't think he would stoop to try and pit one area against the area. But because he mentioned East Durham, an area where I was born and lived all my life, although I'm a Merton lad, the hundreds of millions of pounds he is talking about in the main, and councillor Shield has done a mathematical equation as well, is in the main private sector money. But that private sector injection across East Durham follows the demise of the mining industry, which his government decimated in the eighties and nineties. In East Durham, between eighty one and ninety three, we lost eleven thousand mining jobs and nine thousand jobs associated with the pits. Then we lost the textile industry and unemployment rose to thirty two percent. So that's why you may say that it is out of kilter. I'm proud that we bring things forward based on need. Obviously the Conservatives and other people who were on this meeting this morning don't do that. I will be voting against this amendment.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? I'll briefly pause to allow any more requests. Don't have any more requests? Can I bring in councillor Martin please?
Thanks Chair. And as already stated, AAPs are just not a completely fair way to distribute this money. They have very different populations, geographical areas, and just the best way to solve this problem is to allocate it out per county council, where each has allocated the same population, give or take a margin of error. Reminder, we are not stripping every penny of this funding out of AAPs. We're just trying to make it fairer. Councillor Gunn, councillor McKeon, you may not consult with the community when spending your neighbourhood budgets, but we do. I'd recommend you try it. It makes you a lot more of an effective councillor. Generally, I still don't have confidence in this money being spent. All we've seen over the last few years is announcement after announcement that is attached to a report of some kind that moves the money into a different pot, followed by a press release hailing victory when not a penny has been spent. Or has this always been the plan, just so a portfolio holder has an excuse to pause for a photograph? I think even these claims are even too ridiculous for the leaflet that I put out. Make sure everyone gets a piece of this funding and back this amendment.
councillor Gunn, your point of order?
I do Chair. I will not have a councillor casting aspersions upon what I do in my community with my neighbourhood budget. I think it's totally wrong for him to cast aspersions on me and my consultations in, in my division and also in councillor McKeon's division as well. But I'm talking on behalf of myself here. I find that an outrageous statement to make by implication and I would ask him to withdraw it now.
Bringing in councillor Henning with the right to apply. And I can remind councillor Henning you have three minutes.
Thanks Chair, I will use that time. Just a couple of things. I won't be casting aspersions on anybody individually. I just want to look at this in the round. First of all, this funding is being allocated across all AAPs across County Durham. So it is fair because everybody's getting the same. And I think that's very important. AAPs right from the start, councillor Shuttleworth referred, were set up to represent communities and from the start they have even numbers of board places for councillors, members of the public and partners. And even a rotating chair between those three groups. Now, why is that? Early on, I was asked by a large number of councillors, and I won't say from which groups, why are you giving anybody else a say in AAPs? This should just be councillors. You know, and that's the way it is in most other councils where such bodies exist across the country. Now, the success of AAPs has demonstrated why it is important that everybody has those equal shares and everybody is involved in partnerships. Because more people attend some of our AAP meetings than attended previous meetings of councils, of districts, of county councils and so on. And that, the reason for that is very straightforward because people can have an input directly into the decisions that are made, whether financial or otherwise. This is a model that not only can be used across the rest of the country, but that we've had international visitors coming into Durham to see how it works. And it's, it is direct democracy. And my view is that we need to maximise decisions. I actually want, I'm going to shock some people now, I would like more decisions and funding to go to the AAPs, not less. I think this is a really good step. It builds on the consultation that we made in October, November, where loads of good ideas came out from the public on how to spend the money. And I think that the members of the public are very capable of making the right decisions in between elections on what money should be spent on. There are already, you know, members grants that are very generous compared to a lot of other councils across the country. But it's really important that area partnerships, working in partnership, I will conclude, have that, maximise that opportunity to boost their own areas. So I'd urge everybody to vote against the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go over to the vote. Again, if members having any issues with the vote, please do indicate. Thanks members. It looks like all members have voted. So if any members have any issues, they please indicate now. Now closing the vote. Thanks members. Hundred and one votes have been cast, thirty eight for the amendment, three against and not abstentions. Therefore the amendment falls. I'll pause a moment while we look at the vote sheet.
Chair?
Yes councillor?
It's councillor McLean. Can you just go back there? I voted against and I can't see my name on the sheet. Thank you.
councillor Len Boyd, I'm trying to find my name on the sheet as well. I voted against.
Councillors, I can, I can confirm that there are a hundred and one members in the meeting and there were a hundred and one votes passed.
I'll see my vote now, sorry Chair.
Thank you. We'll move on now councillors. I'm wary, I'm conscious of time and we have a couple of more amendments to go. Therefore I'm going to pause a ten minute comfort break. Thank you. Thank you Members, can I now invite councillor Bev Coates to move the second Liberal Democrat group amendment please?
Thank you Chair. Chair, I would at this point like to declare an interest in that I am a governor at two primary schools, please. I would like to move this motion as detailed in the PACs which colleagues have. Over the last 12 months, how many times have we heard from key members of central government and local authority about schools being one of our main priorities and that they are the safest place for our children to be? This is true in so many ways, school is the best place for children. They grow, they learn and they prosper under the care of the exceptional staff who work within the educational sector. Like many things, it could be better, and this is where we can help. Sadly, many schools within the county have outstanding repairs, some of which are minor, others more important. The expansive range of works which need to be carried out include repairing cracked windows, get defined damp patches in walls, not having ample toilets and continuous heating problems, to name just a few. All children and staff within the education sector deserve better and we need to do everything possible to ensure that they have buildings which are warm, welcome and 100% fit for purpose. This responsibility starts at central government, who need to invest more funds into this area. Since 2016, 26 million has been allocated to this council for major capital projects, which against an estimated 118 million of outstanding work is clearly not sufficient. I urge the portfolio holder to continue lobbying central government and secure more funding for schools in the county. Locally, DCC also need to commit more monies into schools. It is extremely disappointing to see that no funding is factored into the budget proposals for school repairs. The monies allocated are for two new builds being in Belmont and Spennymoora, which are greatly welcomed and will have a significant impact on the children who live in these areas. However, investment should not just be aimed towards new builds, we have so many wonderful old schools full of character and history. Let's bring these schools into the 21st century, get them repaired whilst trying to make them as environmentally friendly as possible. If we deliver this in time, it will help not only to reduce costs, but more importantly, our carbon footprint. We all have a duty of care to the schools and children, regardless of if it's mainstream, primary, SEN or secondary. We can also help our academies, not through financial support, but through assistance with routine building inspection advice. Today, we have the opportunity to make a difference. Let's help give children the future that they deserve and also show everyone who works within a school environment that we care by investing an additional £10 million worth of funding into the buildings where they spend so much of their lives. I urge you all to support this motion, thank you.
Can I have a second to the amendment please?
Yes, it's councillor Elizabeth Scott from Neville's Cross. I will also declare an interest as I am a governor at two schools. I'll reserve the right to speak later and I would like to second this motion, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gunn?
Thank you Chair, and thank you to councillor Coates, I can tell that she really does feel passionate about investing in children and indeed in schools. But I think perhaps the irony of bringing this proposal on investing in school buildings has escaped councillor Coates, because it was the Lib Dem Tory coalition that scrapped the building schools for the Future Programme, which would have seen the replacement of many of our schools and indeed much needed investment in school building stock. Over the last 10 years, the Tory government have reduced the capital allocations for school maintenance, but in spite of this, this Labour council has chosen to supplement that funding from its own resources, and I will repeat, from its own resources. And as resources permit, we intend to carry on this good work. As a council, a Labour council, we are committed to providing the very best for our children in a practical sense and not just trying to make propaganda. So let me tell you what we are doing, and let's see if you have the good grace to recognise our achievements and our proposals for the future. Our proposed capital programme, including additional capital investment in our schools of £21 million, of which only 6.8 million is funded through the Department for Education grant funding, whilst 14.2 million is funded directly by this Labour council. So let's be quite clear, this council, it's this council that's investing, and let's be quite clear that that equates to 68% of all capital investment in schools being funded directly by this council. And last week at Cabinet, we agreed a £34 million investment in new buildings and a new campus at Belmont Community School and Belmont Church of England Primary. This is an enormous commitment, I hope that the Lib Dems will accept that, because it's an enormous commitment when we consider the cuts we face and the many other services we provide. And I think also, can I just say that it is a bit of misinformation and very misleading for councillor Wilkes to put out various things saying that it's not per cent spending on school buildings. And I could have saved him from that confusion actually if he'd come to me before, but I can get you the accurate figures later councillor Wilkes. I totally reject this amendment and call on everybody else to reject it too. Thank you Chair.
Councillor McKeon?
Thank you Chair, I'd like to support what councillor Gunn has said. I too sit on two governing bodies of primary schools in County Durham and we get support from the local authority to upgrade buildings as and when are necessary. We always want to be able to spend more money on our schools, but quite frankly, that's been very difficult since 2010 when alongside trebling my tuition fees and scrapping my educational maintenance allowance, the Tory and Lib Dem coalition decided to end the building schools for the Future Programme, which would have meant that, well, if we kept that programme, we probably wouldn't have the issues that we face across the country in school building maintenance right now. And I do have to say that I am quite annoyed when these motions come from the Liberal Democrats and the Conservatives, given the standards of living and the prospects that people my generation have faced as a result of their policies in government.
Councillor Wilkes?
Sorry Chair, had an IT issue there. It is 0% spending councillor Gunn of local money on school repairs, it's a fact. A couple of new bills, yes, but no local money for dozens of schools in need. Now, perhaps she thinks that leaking school roofs and rotting window frames aren't as visible as things like pavements, which she's happy for local funding to go into, but this isn't an either or. A few years ago, we proposed a motion for school repair funding, and although it was rejected at the time, councillor Johnson agreed with us. So we withdrew it and then late, well sorry, so after that, he then actually put some money in from local funding. I don't know why councillor Gunn doesn't want to do that. Suddenly Labour seems to think it's only the job of government to repair the schools this Labour run council is responsible for. Well, you're wrong. And just to be clear, let's be very clear on this, for decades, this council top sliced school repair funding to the tune of millions of pounds, making a profit through direct services and never putting a penny of that profit back into repairing schools, instead putting it into reserves or spending it on things like clothing allowances for their colleagues. Yes, there's a lack of government funding for school repairs and yes, it's unacceptable, and I hope our Tory colleagues on the council will continue to lobby for more money. But it is completely unacceptable for this Labour run council to not put a single penny of our local funding into repairing all of these schools. A £550 million council budget and not a single penny for the repair and maintenance budget, it's a disgrace with a £100 million backlog. Councillor Gunn, a new school in one part of the county doesn't replace a heating system in a freezing cold school or fix leaking radiators or replace freezing cold single glazed windows that children are sat at or rotting porter cabins.
One remaining councillor.
This is not go away, even when you all vote against it, we'll bring it back again and again and again, until either this Labour run council puts more money in and fixes some of these schools, or the government puts in the money that it should be putting in as well.
Councillor Tucker?
Thank you Chair. I too must declare an interest, because I have two schools that I am a governor of in my area, and I've seen that the times when some of our schools in our area have had to close because of the heating system going off or a leaky roof etc. I'm just wondering why it is that not so long ago, we were brought a motion because County Hall was unfit for purpose and it was voted through for a new building so that staff had nice warm comfortable working environments. I'm just wondering what the rationale is for that proposal and our staff do need a nice warm working environment, but I'm just wondering what the difference is between that and our schools having the same benefits? Because there are a lot of our schools that are in much older buildings that really, really do need some investment. And I welcome councillor Gunn's assurances that this will continue to happen, but it's still not enough, councillor Gunn. We either need to keep lobbying for more money and our Conservative colleagues need to join us on that or we, as a county council and as responsible elected members, really need to find a way to make our schools a much safer and better environment for our children and staff. So if you could answer that question, I'd really welcome that. But I think we do need to find a way to make all of our schools fit for purpose and not just skirting the minimum requirements of building control. Thank you.
Councillor Dunn?
Thank you.
Are you on mute, councillor?
Apologies. Thank you, Chair. Just replying to councillor Tucker, it's much too simplistic to say that the new county hall's being built just to give county hall staff a cosy place to work. That's ridiculous. There's £27 million of backlog of essential repairs and maintenance that building, which is a waste of money and a concrete monstrosity that's a third occupied and doesn't meet the future needs of County Durham. But in the same way, one of the biggest reasons is because it's laden with asbestos. I declare an interest as a governor of Bowburn Primary School with gratitude to Durham Labour-controlled county council because at Easter, an asbestos-laden, clasp-construction Bowburn Junior School building is being replaced by a brand-new primary school. The premises which they're in currently on two sites are totally unfit for purpose and it's because of the investment of Durham County Council that we are able to do this. We're doing this within the resources available. We've also had talks about Coxo Primary School in a growing community where there's a need for more investment and again, the county is being supportive. But let's not forget, it was Nick Clegg, the Lib Dem Deputy Prime Minister, who supported austerity in 2010 and stopped the Building Schools for Future. The deputy head teacher of Framilgar comprehensive school was in the solicitor's office waiting to sign the contract for the building of a brand-new comprehensive school at Framilgar Moor and was stopped from doing so because the government pulled the funding. My two children, and I also declare an interest on behalf of them, have spent the last seven, eight years going through a very, very good school with really great teachers and getting a really good education, but in rubbish premises. And that's down to a lack of funding from the Tory government, which was propped up by the Lib Dems. So this is hypocrisy, absolutely. I think I've said enough. Thank you. I'll not be supporting the amendment. I'll be supporting the budget as set out.
Councillor Tindley?
Thank you, Chair. I attended school in County Durham in the 1980s and the early 1990s. And let's be frank, it hadn't really changed much from the 1920s. It's like something you see today. I take my children to see Beamish. What happened in 1997 is we got a Labour government and to be frank, they transformed schools and the environment that our children learn right across the country and in County Durham, and that was supported by this council. And then look what happened. We get a coalition government with the Lib Dems as a key part of that, Nick Clegg, Deputy Prime Minister, and councillor Wilkes has the audacity to come onto this meeting and try and lecture us about what we're doing in County Durham. I just think he should really have a think about what he's just said there and realise that the Labour Party and the Labour government support our schools, look after our schools, invest in our schools. His party and his colleagues in the Conservative Party, they don't. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Gunn?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And I think some people have lost the grip of what this motion's about. It's not about new schools. It's about repairing the schools we've got. I think councillor Coates very eloquently put across the investment into new school buildings was appreciated. This isn't about the investment into new school buildings. It's about making sure the buildings that we have are fit for purpose and that we invest in those. It's also an investment to save money in some respects because the amount of money that schools are having to take out of their budgets to make repairs that are essential is money that's not being spent on children's education and I say that as a chair of a primary school and of an academy trust board.
Thank you. Before I bring anyone else, I'll briefly pause for any more requests. We have no more requests. Therefore, I'll bring in councillor Scott.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I've no doubt that we all care a great deal about education and it's one of the key pillars of local government and probably one of the reasons that many of us are here as councillors. But what I've heard there is really a bit of showboating from colleagues from the Labour side. Just using this as a stick to beat Tories and Lib Dems with detracts from the very issue that's at the heart of what we're talking about here. It doesn't help the children, doesn't help the support staff, the caretakers, the teachers who are sitting in classrooms with buckets in the corner to catch the drips. It doesn't help that. It just clouds the picture. We've got a problem with the very fabric of our education system and we, as an authority, are allowing ourselves to walk into a black hole and at one point, we will be in a crisis with this. We have the means to solve that problem now, to do something proactive to ensure that we don't face that crisis in times to come. The children of County Durham need and deserve our support. I'm going to quote councillor Hennig here and I'm going to try very hard not to misquote him because we've had a bit of that today. He said in his leaders' report, "We will do everything we can to support them in the months ahead." He was talking about schools. Well, let's put your money where your mouth is. Let's do everything we can to support them. And I'm asking my colleagues here today to examine their conscience on the matter and vote for the amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor McKeen, you've already spoken on the debate, so therefore we'll bring in councillor Hennig. This is right to reply.
Thank you, Chair. And can I thank everyone for their passion on this issue? I know a large number of colleagues on all sides are on governing bodies or not, as myself, but are still passionate about the education of our young people. And I'll repeat for councillor Scott's benefit, so even better than quoting what I said before, I'll repeat it. As Durham County Council, we will always do what we can to help our schools and our young people because, you know, we need people to have the best start in life. We need people's aspirations to be as high as they possibly can be and good school buildings are a key part of that. And that's why the Building Schools for the Future programme was such a huge thing after 1997. And at the time, and I can remember going out, for example, when we were talking about, you know, whether it was in Overend Seum, in Sedgfield, some of the places in Stanley that obviously were high on that list. And none of us, I don't think, thought at that time that the axe, the guillotine, was going to fall part of the way through. So that those schools that were all listed but later down, unfortunately, you know, dropped off because of that decision made by national government in terms of ending that programme. And I think, I have to say, that that was a mistake. And I think it was even recognised later on by even the proponents of austerity that curtailing capital spending in that way was totally unnecessary and it had, you know, a lot of very negative consequences. And unfortunately, it is beyond in any individual local authority to reinstitute Building Schools for the Future or to have the, you know, the buildings that, you know, that I think we all would want to have so that we can all, like councillor Dunn, talk about new schools and so on. And it's beyond any local authority, whether Durham or anybody else, in terms of that scale of investment. It does take the national governments, I'm afraid, to make those decisions. My understanding is that not only was Building Schools for the Future ended...
One minute remaining, councillor.
Thank you, Chair, but that the major repairs allowance or the money that's come in from the centre, and I stand to be corrected because I was looking for it now and I couldn't find it, but the information. But my understanding is that the money that we've received has also fallen from the national level. So in other words, we're receiving less and less nationally. And of course, we, as has been said quite rightly, we've got hundreds of schools in County Durham and we need to do the best we can with the resources we have. I believe that there is investment still happening. I reiterate again, we will always do what we can to help our schools within the constraints that we have and we must lobby so that national government takes this seriously. So, and I would hope that we would bring back something like Building Schools for the Future. So because of how successful that programme was. Thank you.
Now I'll hand over to Helen, who will spin the procedure.
Thank you, Chair. So the vote will work as it has been previously, but just to clarify, because we have had a few technical issues. We know how many members are in the meeting room for the number of votes that we are looking for. So before we close the vote, we will check whether or not anybody's had any issues. And then once the votes close, we'll be able to see, you know, if anybody's indicated at that point, we'll be able to cross-check that their votes are recorded accurately.
We'll open the vote now. It looks like all members have voted. Therefore, we'll now close the vote. Thank you, members. 102 votes have been cast for the amendment, 38 against, 63 and one abstention. Therefore, the amendment falls. We'll just take a minute to have the vote called.
Chairman, it's Alan Neipier. Can you check my vote, please? Because it went into four, the initials, so I went into the polls and reversed that. Can you check to see that it's against the amendment, please?
It's Patricia Joplin. Can you also check mine? I didn't see it on the list. Thank you. I voted for.
Members, we've confirmed both those votes, but I'd just like to reiterate a point of procedure in that the vote has closed. We've had 102 votes cast and once the vote's closed, it's not possible to amend votes. So when we've got that 102 and we've not identified any technical issues, the vote is closed at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. That moves on. Can I now invite councillor Mark Wilkes to move the third Liberal Democrat amendment?
Thank you, Chair. We're nearly there. I've been asked if we can move straight to the vote, but I don't want to take away the opportunity for Labour councillors to click in and show their support for this motion. This proposal asks for £250,000 over three years. Earlier, if officers can do that, to improve our nature reserves. And it asks for £250,000 a year over three years to tackle a big chunk of the backlog of works on our public rights of way network. And that will include two extra rights of way officers to help address the backlog of, wait for it, 2,000 requests for action from the public. That's 2,000 unaddressed issues from the public. So that's £250,000 for nature reserve, £60,000 for public right-of-way officers over the period of three years and £190,000 a year for the public rights of way improvements. That's a million pounds in total. I'd love to ask for more, but I'm trying to be prudent so councillor Neipier doesn't chuck his dummy out. Our finance officers have confirmed this is acceptable. So to be clear, this is more than a doubling of the current budget for the public rights of way and more than doubling of our budget for the 50-plus nature reserves too. To put that into context, we spend many times that on the comms department. So why do we want to do this? One thing is absolutely clear from this pandemic and that is that people have had to get out exercising closer to home. This motion will help residents in every single one of our electoral divisions. At the moment, Durham County Council is maintaining significantly less than 10% of its public rights of way and nature reserves. This is openly admitted by the council. Over 3,000 kilometres of rights of way untouched, over 2,000 requests for action ignored. The responsibility for this lies with Durham County Council. We know there's a backlog of work which needs to be done and we know that the public desperately wants to see our nature reserves, our public rights of way looked after and improved. That's the crux of it. I don't want any of us to fall out over this. We've had enough of that today. I simply want us to take a tiny proportion of the money we have to address an issue at a critical time which is in desperate need of being addressed. I'm not asking to break the bank. I'm not proposing cutting staff or services to pay for it. I'm just asking for some of our residents' money, which is sat there in the bank, to be spent on them. Given the size of this local authority, is it really too much to ask to make it easier and safer for people to get out and about in our county and to improve our nature reserves? This will improve our environment and our ecology too. It's green, it's healthy and it's affordable. This proposal will pay for itself through the improvements in people's health and through the improvements in our environment. So, Labour councillors, please support this or if you really can't, perhaps just say your internet connection went down when we come to the vote so your residents can start to enjoy these improvements. Please support the motion. Thank you.
Can I have a second to the amendment, please?
Yes, Chair. Liz Brown, Neville's Cross. Strangely enough, I haven't been asked to stop speaking and go straight to the vote, but you'll be delighted to hear that I'm not reserving the right to reply and I'm going to be as brief as possible for everyone's sake and hopefully completely non-controversial. However, just because I'm being brief, this doesn't mean that this is a motion that isn't worth your support. As someone who has walked across the county and with a keen interest in County Durham's beautiful countryside and natural resources, I wish to second councillor Wilkes's motion. In these 60-ish years I've been walking Durham's footpath, there's been a noticeable deterioration in standards. This decline has accelerated over the last few years despite the good work being carried out by officers. For example, we have one path that's been closed since 2013 because it's fallen into disrepair. Many factors are responsible, but lack of finance has certainly contributed. finance has certainly contributed, and this proposal would help patrol and repair nature reserves and public rights-of-way. Now more than ever, the county needs these resources to ensure the mental and physical health of our residents. The amount asked for may seem for too some to be excessive, but the benefits will far outweigh the cost in human terms. What price are my fellow councillors prepared to put on the health and wellbeing of our residents? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair. I think the first thing is that I'd just like to say the public rights-of-way are an essential part of the landscape and provide a really important opportunity for accessibility for our communities. As members will be aware, many of these are privately owned and not owned by the by the council. But as a council, we've invested heavily in access, and I just want to point out that really for some of the active travel schemes for cycling and walk, and there's an estimate seventy-seven million pounds worth of projects in the pipeline, as well as building in further active mode measures into schemes which are road-based as well. The Towns and Villages Programme provides an additional 3.75 million for localised walk and cycling improvements, focused away from the main corridor routes and seeking to link residential communities with the town centres and key employment sites. The stronger Towns Fund in Bishop Auckland includes a proposed package of three million pounds' worth of walk and cycling routes, which is seeking to link residential communities across West Auckland and St Helens and other areas to the south of the county. We're also undertaking feasibility work on establishing a clear Barnard Castle of Bishop Auckland Walk and Cycling Link, utilising the former railway line. We're doing work with the Stockton and Darlington Railway Heritage Action Zone for a comprehensive programme of improvements along the former Stockton and Darlington Railway route, including sections across South West Durham. We've had a focus of recent Section 106 projects, including across Spennymil, where developer funding, not council funding, has been used through the planning process to provide better connectivity. And of course, through our climate emergency work, we've seen millions of trees in the process of being planted across the county, improving the biodiversity. It's a central part of that work that we're doing as a council chair. Chair, I just want to highlight when we adopted our local plan, it sets out clearly that future development will protect existing footpaths, bridleways, as well as encouraging the enhancement of existing routes alongside creating new ones. It's going to be really important as we continue to develop and link the network that already exists. The planning policy is very clear, and it requires any development needs to be enhanced and improve the biodiversity, so there's an overall net gain from where it is presently, focusing on the establishment of coherent ecological networks across the county. And for me, Chair, this budget amendment baffles us when councillor Wilkes didn't want to improve or protect the rights-of-way and biodiversity when the council considered the adoption of the county plan just a few months ago. Chairs have outlined the additional allocation proposed is a drop in the ocean when it's compared to the wider provisions in investment this council's making. It's substantial, in the substantial budget. And I just think that there's already a massive increase in provision for these projects that will see the council spending more than ever before on improving access and biodiversity right across County Durham. Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Wilkes, you've got point of order.
I do, Chair. And not for the first time today, councillors are basically telling lies about people, and I'd appreciate it if they didn't.
Councillor Patterson?
Thanks, Chair. Chair, we've seen councillor Wilkes as an expert in public rights-of-way now and nature reserves, riding off the miles of network and statistics there. But perhaps I maybe ought to start by reminding councillor Wilkes that the public rights-of-way area officers were originally cut by the local government reorganisation and the austerity that was imposed on this council by the Conservatives and the Lib Dems. Chairman, I am pleased councillor Wilkes wants to increase our staffing, but I feel this motion is nothing more than a political gesture ahead of the election because it carries no substance. And I say that because councillor Wilkes has not presented a robust strategic business case to demonstrate the need for the level of investment that's being proposed. What will these public rights-of-way officers be doing? Where's the evidence that they're even needed? He mentions 2,000 service requests, but those requests could actually be the responsibility of the landowner and not Durham County Council. He wants us to double the maintenance budgets without any evidence of what's required, and he wants to take that money from a combination of reserves and the underspend, and we don't even know whether that will materialise. Now, I know councillor Wilkes will have had the costumes that underpin the motion checked by our Section 151 officer, but I would question both the need for the investment and the proposed strategy, because it seems to me that he's playing fast and loose with the council's finances. Spend today and worry about tomorrow what's going to happen. And that's not a strategy I believe that we should be adhering to. That said, Chair, public rights-of-way are an integral part of our environment, and the accessibility is particularly important for all of our rural communities across the county, which is why we're always looking at ways to expand the resource in that area. Whilst we might have miles of public rights-of-way networks, it's important to remember that they are the joint responsibility of Durham County Council and the landowners. Many of our nature reserves aren't owned by DCC and now are instead managed by Natural England and other non-government departments, such as the Wildlife Trust. We already are looking at the wider rural accessibility as part of the towns and villages agenda. We've got two public rights-of-way officers included as part of the Bishop Auckland Towne...
One minute remaining, councillor.
...for the Low Barns Nature Reserve. We've also got an additional two public rights-of-way staff to meet the demand for the modification orders for lost bridleways. Chairman, our public rights-of-way work is regarded as exemplary nationally. We support the UNB, and we've got expressions of thanks on record from the Local Access Forum, and we've even recently been presented with the British Horse Society Access Achievement Award in recognition of our work. I think councillor Wilkes's motion on the surface might seem like a good idea, Chair, but something, you know, that he can put up on his upcoming election leaflet. But like all the motions that we've seen table today, when you're actually scratched beneath the surface, it's not being thought through, and there's no substantial business case being presented. So I'd urge members to vote against the amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Wilkes, you can't keep using points of order to speak during the debate. You've already spoken. So move on to councillor York.
Thanks, Chair. Rob York, Member for West Auckland and cabinet support for neighbourhood and local partnerships. Chairman, our highways budget already aligns resources to this area. We employ eight officers in our rights-of-way team and invest around £190,000 annually on maintenance across the county. Alongside this is a highways capital contribution towards the maintenance and replacement of wooden footbridges, which totaled over £100,000 in 2020 alone. This is on top of the £36,000 council contribution to maintaining the area of outstanding natural beauty in Upper Weyadale. Chairman, I do not support the amendment put forward. We are making more resources available through the town and village funding, and I would encourage individual schemes to be brought forward for consideration as part of the programme that AAPs will be overseeing. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Atkinson?
Yeah, just a brief point, Chair, relative to councillor Wilkes referring to people being economical with the truth. I always listen quite carefully to what Mr Wilkes says as well, and he often rattles things off as fact on a regular basis, that he might think of the facts, but sometimes it was just his opinion. So, I mean, he's just said, he mentioned 2,000 requests there, and he used the word ignored. Two thousand requests, he repeated 2,003 times. Then, how did they know they were ignored? You know, they might not have been able to be dealt with. Did he go and check that they were ignored? How would he know that even if they were ignored? So, you know, I mean, we just have to be very careful in what we're saying today. It's been a bit, it's been a bit of a long day, like, okay, thank you.
Councillor Bainbridge?
Hello, thank you, Chair. I would just like to put a comment forward that I had reported a public right-of-way on our Riverside Park towards the cricket ground end. That was in deplorable condition, and I'd had several residents get in touch with me. And I went down and I watched, and we had over forty-five people with dogs or runners or people with children in pushchairs, and they had to go through mud. And when I got in touch with the rights-of-way, they told me they had no money to repair. And I got back in touch with them, and I asked them, could they go through COVID-19 money, considering the amount of people that was using our rights-of-way in our park area? And they said they were going to approach. So I've had nothing back from them since then. But I've got to say, I know we do do a lot of good work on our public rights-of-way, but in these cases, we'll have been cut short on Chesley Street. Thank you.
I'll briefly pause to allow members for any more requests. No more requests. I'll bring in councillor Hennig as the right to reply.
Thanks very much, Chair. Again, thanks for the amendments. I think everybody would agree about the importance of our footpath, rights-of-way, nature reserves, and people being able to enjoy the outdoors. I think it is going to be important as we come out of the pandemic and over that next period, over the next few weeks and months. I think councillor Marshall has outlined a substantial amount of additional investment and other things being done from a variety of sources. And that's the important thing, to be able to get this investment from a number of different sources and where we can. And I think that's what councillor Marshall has outlined, as well as councillor York, in terms of the existing staffing. And I do think that we do what we can, where, and there are a range of different circumstances, and some of them are weather-related, which I think has just been referred to as well, because that can definitely cause issues. And I know we'll continue to do what we can within that. So I think, given that councillor Marshall's outlined the substantial additional investment that's already taking place in this area, my view is that we should, again, that we should vote against this amendment. But I, as I said, I think we all agree that the importance of this particular area, and I certainly think as we move ahead, we need to carry on doing exactly what councillor Marshall has said, which is to use all the different sources that we've got to be able to boost our work across this area. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We'll now go to the vote. If any members have any issues, please indicate in the chat function. Just before we close the vote, can I just double check if members have any issues? We're closing the vote now, members. Thank you, members. A hundred and one votes have been cast for the amendment, thirty-three against sixty-four, and four abstentions. Put the votes briefly on the screen. Thank you, members. Colleagues, we now return to substantive motions for items nine and 10. Does anyone who has not already spoken on substantive motions wish to do so? Please indicate using the chat function. Councillor Tinsley?
Thank you, Chair. You know, there's a lot of people who are struggling at the moment, and I think everybody's tightening the belts. We know this, and this council tax increase, which is the real headline here, is below the national average. It's below the government assumption of 5% as well. And it's a core spending power, and that's the government's figure of what they say we are worth. It's £180 less per household than the national average. But we can only assume that the government think we're worth less than elsewhere, worse less than people in Surrey and Wokingham. And just think, if they had put us at that national average, £45 million, what would that mean? Yes, we could have lots of free park and lots of extra rights-of-way officers, and lots of additional school repairs. But they haven't. They think we're below worth of the national average. Let's move to COVID then. That's the next issue that we're all dealing with. What have we seen in 2021, this year? We've spent just under £110 million in County Durham. What have the government given us? Less than 90 million, a 20 million shortfall. What the problem is next year? 15.6 million. It's less what the problem is next year than the shortfall from last year. So how can we trust this government to fund us on a par with what COVID has cost us in County Durham? What this budget does, it takes a long-term view, it looks to recovery and a stronger County Durham after COVID, it's responsible, it's comprehensive, it's a response to complex problems. It's not short-term, it's not knee-jerk, a tinkering at the edges of a one billion pound budget, it's not populist, and it's not political electioneering, which what a number of the amendments we are seeing today are about. Frankly, it's remarkable that we can invest an extra £22 million in frontline services after ten years of government authority. And our capital programme, you know what? It's the envy of local authorities up and down this country. What it's doing, it's investing in our future, in jobs, so we can claw ourselves out of this COVID mess. We're levelling up across County Durham. That's what we do. And that's what the towns and villages programme is about, you know? And we do have some of the highest levels of multiple deprivation in England in County Durham. I represent the award with some of the worst...
One minute remaining, councillor.
I fear some members here don't or don't choose to recognise that. We have 11% of our workforce still on furlough, facing uncertain future. 16% youth unemployment in some areas. We don't turn our back on people who need our support more than ever at this time. The council tax reduction scheme is probably the best example of this. We want a few authorities to keep it. What this budget does, it makes sure that post-COVID, we move forward in County Durham with nobody left behind. I ask members to join me and support this motion and adopt a strong, sustainable, well-conceived, and inclusive budget for County Durham and all its residents. I'm supporting the motion. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Martin?
Thanks, Chair. I want to take, I want to echo some of what councillor Tinsley has said there, but I want to take a different tack with it. And I want to take a moment to recognise all of those paying council tax and recognise the struggle of... the struggle of ratepayers across County Durham. You know, yes, we have one of the best local council tax reduction schemes, if not one of the best, something that gains support across the political spectrum in this virtual chamber. But for those not cushioned by this protective blanket, council tax continues to be that ever-increasing expense on household budgets, galloping far beyond the cost of living increase. And COVID has really been something that hits all sections of society. And I really worry about those just above the thresholds for support. They are worried about the future of their livelihoods, wages being compressed more than ever. And now us as a council are about to hammer them with a 4% increase in council tax. Now, there are a lot of tit-for-tat arguments for blame on council tax increases. The various reports coming from Cabinet point the finger at the government protecting their heartlands in the South, while government points the finger at us as a council as a whole, referencing the £50 million that we're spending to build a new shiny headquarters. But in actual fact, the real problem is how local authorities can raise money. We really need wholesale reform of the way local authorities tax society. Council tax is unfair, and without a doubt, business rates are really unfair. It doesn't matter whether you're in a lower or higher band, we will pay more comparatively to sufferers with higher value properties and larger household incomes. So today, the thoughts in my mind in this budget are for the laws that I represent stuck in the middle of this broken system. We really need something that is more progressive.
The remaining councillor.
We need something that is more progressive, fairer, rather than the massive inequalities that our communities face, further adding to the north-south divide. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Gunn?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I want to suggest, and in response to councillor Martin actually, that the amendments that have been proposed earlier and indeed lost are the amendments, if you like, of political cowardice. And I say that, I take no pleasure in saying that, but I say political cowardice because every party had the opportunity to engage in the process of practical budget setting. Councillor Martin was suggesting various things there. That could have happened, but not one party has proposed a complete alternative budget, not one. They've come forward with bits and pieces of amendments that take away money from here or don't take away money but put money somewhere else, but not one has engaged in the very complex, and I accept it is, very complex budget-setting process. So somebody mentioned earlier about showboating. I don't quite know who that was directed at or from whom. I can't recall, it's been a long day, but I think the amendments were about showboating because really, there was no substance there, there's no serious financial consideration, and there's basically no understanding of the knock-on effects and the future impact of what they were proposing. So for me, this is a really excellent budget, and I strongly support the leader, Simon Henning, councillor Simon Henning, ably supported by the deputy leader councillor Al Napier in setting and bringing this financially sound and comprehensive budget. And I look forward to implementing it in the next 12 months. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair. I just want to make a few comments on the substantive budget. And in doing so, I just want to put out and record my thanks to councillor Napier and what will probably be his final budget with the county council, and in particular for the way he's managed the strategic finances of the council and what's been some of the darkest days faced by local government and by our communities across the county. I think, Chair, I would just like to urge all members just to consider what they're actually voting for here and what potentially, and more importantly, that could be voting against. I think this budget clearly supports our recovery from the pandemic and following years of austerity brings forward investment for this council that'll undoubtedly support our local economy and businesses. The towns and villages programme will see another £25 million put in place to complement the £750 million of work already ongoing. This is going to bring about real change in communities by improving the environment, bringing back into use derelict buildings, shop refurbishments, improvement to connectivity in terms of transport and digital. The budget provides the biggest council house building programme this council's seen in a generation in parts of the county it's needed most, with an estimated investment of over £70 million. The selective licensing scheme will see us tackling rogue landlords and empty properties, making sure people have a safe, secure home to live in. Support for leisure, a multi-million pound investment, which will see this Labour council bringing new leisure centres across the county, significant investment in all of our other leisure facilities, repurposing leisure for generations to come, creating a reason for people to visit our town centres with family-oriented, healthy, accessible and affordable activities. Chair, this budget's bringing us better connectivity, improving walking, cycling, investment in the highways, new bus stations, and creating a cleaner, greener transport network. Earlier this year, Chair, this Labour group and the council approved the County Durham Plan and set out our ambitions to create 30,000 jobs across the county. I'm pleased to say that our ambitions to support businesses and jobs is supported by this budget and builds on the commitments we've made. Due to the investments made by the council, we've also secured millions of pounds in funding to support our strategic sites, and I'm really, really pleased that the government have put £6 million into our AIG heads development, paving the way for thousands of new jobs. Chair, I just want to conclude and say that it's been one of the most positive budgets of any council across the country. There's a multi-million pound job and programme of investment to support recovery, jobs and growth, and I fully support the budget as proposed and would urge the opposition members not to vote against the substantial list of projects and programmes we're putting forward for our communities right across County Durham. Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Sates?
Thank you, Chair. As a cabinet member for social inclusion, I would like to support the budget proposals put forward for consideration today. As a council, we have consistently sought to protect vulnerable people over many years and tackle inequality wherever it exists. It is something that I am passionate about and something that has proved more and more difficult over the years as a result of austerity and the attack on the welfare state. We can all be rightly proud that we still retain the local council tax support scheme that protects all claimants and does not cap the support that can be received. We remain one of only a handful of councils nationally and the only one in our region to offer that level of protection, and long may that continue with 80% of financially vulnerable working-age households receiving 100% council tax reduction and having no bills to pay. Such support has proved invaluable over the last year and has allowed us to augment that scheme with top-up payments for those working-age claimants left with a bill to pay. Payments of up to £300 to top up our continued and the next year and will be around twice the level other councils will be able to provide, and I for one welcome this. Not only that though, but we have protected and augmented our budgets for welfare assistance and other anti-poverty interventions. The 2122 budget again includes an additional 1.5 million of additional investment into our welfare assistance and discretionary housing payment schemes and into other wider anti-poverty measures in support of our poverty action plan. On top of this, we will again be allocating an additional £100,000 to each of our 14 AAPs to invest in local projects to support advice and food and anti-poverty interventions within their localities as part of the recovery in response to COVID. These proposals, Chair, represent a comprehensive package of measures that seek to tackle social inclusion. They build on the decisions we have taken in previous years to protect frontline service delivery. They build on our strong financial management of this council over many years, which has meant that we will continue to be able to rise to the challenges ahead that we don't really know what they are yet. There's a huge word out there at the moment, it's called uncertainty. Chair, commend the proposals set out in this report. And in doing so, I'd like to place on record my thanks to all the finance teams in helping prepare in this budget, but also to councillor Napier for his work as deputy leader and portfolio for finance over many years in what will be the last budget he will probably speak on for this council. I fully support this, and I urge everybody else to support the budget as presented. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Bell?
Thanks, Chair. I would like to thank all the officers for the work in the budgets this year and also in helping with the opposition amendments. And I'd also like to thank councillor Napier for his sterling work over the last decade, which has been difficult. Just to say in terms of the towns and villages, councillor Napier, if you listen carefully, I wasn't suggesting that East Durham shouldn't get a lot more money than Teasdale, but I was querying the quantum. And when the council has £750 million referred to in a cabinet paper and doesn't actually break it down into what's the council contribution, private contribution and partner contribution, I don't think that is a very high standard of work, and I don't think that paper should have gone to Cabinet and gone out into the public domain. It's difficult to see how our total capital programme of £484 million over five years in appendix eight fits into that £750 million figure. Obviously, we welcome the capital investment that's going into the county, and councillor Gunn alluded to the £82 million going into roads from central government and the £40 million going from the council. I think at the heart though of the contributions of the Labour members to the budget debate is a fundamental contradiction, and kind of think we should have started this work debate in January, not only because of its length, but also because I'm minded of the Roman god Janus, who faced in two directions at once. On the one hand, you castigate the government for cuts and blaming it for all manners of adversities on the people of County Durham, starving you of money. On the other hand, you congratulate yourselves on all the great things you're able to do and all your spending increases in capital and revenue, et cetera, et cetera, your restraint and council tax. You can't have it both ways, I'm afraid. So we need to choose which one of those arguments you actually want to stick with. Finally, just on councillor Gunn's comment about why aren't we proposing-
The remaining councillor.
-a complete new budget, be careful what you wish for. And I would suggest if opposition groups introduce more amendments, you might want to stop Labour members queuing up in droves to shoot them down, queuing in droves and maybe confine yourselves to one or two people speaking against an amendment and not dozens. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor McDonald?
Councillor McDonald, thank you. I think we should rightly be proud of what we do for so many of our residents with the council's tax reduction scheme that we have, but lots of us have to pay our council tax in full, and we have done since it was introduced. Council tax in its current form is grossly unfair and outdated. It's based on house prices of 1991, and from the start was already skewed in favour of the people who were rich in terms of their property wealth. And there was no cap on band-aged properties which were valued at over £320,000. What I'd like to see this council do is call for council tax reform, and as a step in the right direction, and to start to level up this grossly unfair tax. Thank you.
Councillor Hopgood?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just a couple of things. I just want to pick up on what councillor Gunn said at the beginning. Our amendments are fully costed, they've been agreed and accepted by the finance officers of the council, and they have to be to get on these papers, so to indicate otherwise is a criticism of them. Perhaps if the Labour group were to share their plans slightly earlier than December, while I appreciate the government settlement is always late, that some of the proposals in this budget cannot possibly have been dreamt up since December, cannot possibly have been costed and put forward since December. So they have been there for quite some time and just come forward at the last minute. Perhaps if you did include opposition councillors in some sort of discussions a few months earlier, you might find that we don't have to sit through hours like this of amendments when we've only seen the budget in the last couple of months. And finally, on a positive note, I would like to say thank you to councillor Napier. He has, over the last few years, been the portfolio holder for finance, and we all know that he is stepping down this term. It hasn't been an easy job, but what he has always been is polite and professional and courteous, whether it to be his own members or to members of the opposition. And it's actually something some people might like to learn from going forwards, that when we do speak in forums like this, that we do respect the fact that all of us are elected. So thank you, Chair.
Councillor Atkinson?
Yes, Chair. I just wanted to say that this budget didn't just turn up on our laptops in the last week or so, and it's come over a long time and it's had contributions from everybody. And I just wanted to say congratulations to Paul Derby and his team. It is an excellent budget, and I'm confident that everybody can be proud of it. And everybody's been involved, all the members have been involved, they've all been involved in different committees, they've all had to say what they wanted to say. We've run through a number of amendments this morning, and from them amendments, you know, they all went down, but at the end of the day, they haven't fallen on deaf ears. And Paul Derby and his team have been working with all of these things all of the time, and we've ended up with this budget. I think we can be confident in the budget, and I think everybody's to credit. At the end of the day, it won't be just the Labour Party, it's all the councillors who are involved and everybody. And I'm critical, it couldn't have looked any better as far as I was concerned. It looks easy to vote for. I think everybody's had this here. It's been a very long day today, and it's been a very, very strong debate. And there are people watching this today, and I think from that, that they'll say that something is working. And to be fair, if you think about the constraints that we've been under, it's working very well. So to everybody, as I say, to councillor Napier, Paul Derby and everybody, and all the councillors, I'd just like to say, it's a very good budget, and I'll be voting in favour of it. Thank you.
Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure how many councillors know this, but the following is a fact, a fact, Jim. There's an anticipated net underspend of £4.4 million in our adult residential care budget, which is not factored in to this budget, and a £1.3 million overspend in our home care budget. This leaves an underspend of £3.1 million. Whilst this is expected to reduce over the course of this year, this budget has not been adjusted to take this underspend into account. I can't support a council tax increase for this council when Labour councillors not only refuse to invest in areas desperately needed, but force a council tax rise on struggling residents, even though part of this increase is not needed in this financial year. And I shall be following this up in subsequent meetings of this council.
Councillor Sexton?
Thank you, Chair. A lot of it's been covered, what I wanted to say, by many different people. I would also like to, whether I don't always agree with everyone, but like to wish councillor Napier the best. He's been doing this role for many years, and I know he's put a lot of effort in that. And I'd also like to thank the officers. I agree with a lot on this budget, I disagree with a lot. But, you know, that's life, I guess, at the end of the day. I want to look after my residents. I'm particularly concerned that in the biggest challenge we've had in peacetime, we're not using our financial clout to freeze council tax. And these are all government guidance on social and adult care increases. And I think if there ever was a time for us to demonstrate that we represent the people who need us most, now is the time. And I think we failed them. I really do. And while we've got our call at the Vanity Project, there's the HQ and other things, and councillors have said about all of these towns and village investments, when people are struggling to make ends meet, a little bit of help would have went a long, long way. We should be freezing some of this investment till we get through this. Instead, we just continually increase, and I think people are just a little bit tired of it. Thanks, Chair.
Any more members wishing to speak? Any more members wishing to speak? I'll briefly pause for any more requests. No other members have registered, therefore can I bring in the leader of the council to close the debate, please?
Thank you, Chair. And can I thank everyone who has spoken in this lengthy budget debate? I would also like to particularly thank councillor Alan Napier for his hard work over the last decade, which has left this council's finances in a very strong position. Probably more so, I have to say, than almost every other local authority in the country. And despite all of the challenges that we faced, so I think, I'm sure all of us would wish councillor Napier a very long and happy retirement, although we haven't quite reached May yet. But certainly, I know we all thank him for all his work over the years. Can I just pick up one or two specific points? I appreciate, I just don't have the time to go through all of them. Councillor Richard Bell's point on the seven hundred and fifty million, I think it was explained that that is a mixture of private and public sector. So it's not a council budget and that is the reason for, you know, as I understand it, for not having that information. I do think, I mean, a number of comments are made on the issue obviously of amendments. And my view is that we will always look at things when we can. And we've already said, we will bring to cabinet a paper looking at how we can extend free parking and boost our town centres without removing all restrictions completely. And we will do that in the next few weeks. I also agree with the points made on council tax system about the council tax system being fundamentally unfair. I totally agree with that point and it's partly because of the council tax bandings that there are across the country, meaning that basically councils in the south of the country do have an advantage. And so I totally agree with what's been said. And it is a long time since any government has been prepared to grasp this, but they really need to grasp it. At the moment, the government's own core spending power measure, as I said before, assumes a five percent council tax increase, which simply magnifies that further and the whole council's tax system needs to be looked at.
A meeting councillor.
Clearly, our council tax increase proposes less than that. In conclusion, this has been a very challenging year for everyone and as we move into the recovery, I believe County Durham is very well placed to move into the future with confidence. Not least thanks to a five hundred million pound capital programme, an economic expansion designed to bring tens of thousands of new jobs to County Durham when they're needed more than ever, and investment in our frontline services to make Durham, County Durham, clean, green and safe. I commend this budget and hope that everyone can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to move to the recorded vote on the medium term financial plan twenty twenty one to twenty two, to twenty twenty four to twenty five and revenue and capital budget twenty twenty one to twenty two, as moved and seconded by councillors Hennig and Napier. It would appear that all members have voted. If anyone is having any issues, please indicate before the vote closes.
I've indicated, Chair, I'm not sure that my vote was submitted for.
Anybody else?
Yeah, councillor Sexton, I'm sure. I'm sure it's been registered but against.
Liz Madison, unsure too.
councillor John Clare, I haven't had the done reply, but it's registering that I've voted.
councillor Madison, which way did you vote, please?
Against.
Okay, we're closing the vote now. Thank you, members. Ninety eight votes have been cast for the amendment, sixty four against, thirty two abstentions, two. I can confirm that the members who query the votes, they're being registered. Therefore, the motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you, members. I'm now going to move to the recorded vote for the council tax setting in order to meet the county councils tax requirement for twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, as moved and seconded by councillors Hennig and Napier. I will now open the vote. Thanks, members. It looks like all members have voted. If anyone's got any issues before I close the vote, please indicate now. No requests, so I'll close the vote. Thanks, members. It's been ninety seven votes cast, four sixty two against, thirty five and zero abstentions. Therefore, the motion is carried. Thank you, members. That moves on to item eleven, questions from members. There are no questions for today's meeting. That concludes today's business. Before the meeting finishes, I would like to thank everyone for taking part and to those members of the public and media who have been watching this meeting. If everyone in the meeting could please stay seated and remain silent until the broadcast has ended. Thank you.